I assume it's for you. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
The Durham Public Schools Board of Education Monthly Meeting is now in session. At this time, we wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone who is joining us this evening. The purpose of this meeting is to inform our parents, staff, and constituents about the work aligned with our mission to embrace, educate, and empower every student to innovate, serve, and lead. The interpreters for tonight are Martha Romer Ughilas and Vanessa Pina Ramirez. Thank you for taking the time to join us. The next item on our agenda is a moment of silence. Thank you. We will now have celebrations.
Good evening, everyone. There are no in-person celebrations this evening. They have been incorporated into Dr. Lewis's superintendent's update. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Ms. Cooper. So the next item on our agenda is the superintendent update, Dr. Lewis.
Right, let me get this loaded here on my screen. Good evening, board members. Thank you so much, board. Chiraj's board members, members of the public. Thank you so much for those that are in attendance and those that may be watching. We do have a student board member that's going to join us here in just a moment. So we can go ahead and get started on these slides. Thank you. The first thing I would like to do is just honor the life and legacy of one of our bus monitors who's passed away. Ms. Francine Snyder, she's shown on the picture in the black jacket. Passed away at the end of May, and so certainly want to, as a school system, recognize and honor her life and service to the scholars and staff of Durham Public Schools. This photo was actually taken in the fall when I had an amazing opportunity to ride her bus and just kind of listen to some of her stories and some of the concerns and celebrations that enjoys that she often would share about the young children that rode her bus. And so I want us to continue to keep her family in our thoughts and prayers. Next slide. And so as we celebrate the conclusion of a school year, we are already preparing for the year ahead. You know, oftentimes, and I know educators can attest to this, but oftentimes, those that are not in education will say to educators, oh, it's the summer, so you all are just not doing anything. No, that's the busiest time of the year for us and for our educators. That's their time to, they're already thinking and planning and attending professional development sessions to prepare for next year. And so we are eagerly also doing that to ensure that we are ready to receive our students with, and year-round in July and then in traditional year in August. So things like providing, and here's the thing too, I want to, before I get too far into this, providing technical assistance for us tonight, again, this is another opportunity for the summer. We have our very own scholar interns in the IT department this summer. They helped us out at our leadership retreat, which I'll speak to in just a moment. But they are, I think they may be behind the glass, I think. So we can probably wave at them or if you all get a chance to come out and see the board. But you know, learning often happens in the classroom, but it also happens through invaluable experiences like this. And we are so fortunate. And we do recognize there are other community businesses and organizations that create internships for our scholars. We too want to make sure that we're doing our part to create meaningful experiences for our young scholars. There we go. Give them a round of, come on in, come on in. Come on in so they can see you. Yeah, thank you all so much for being here with us, not only tonight, but for what you've done today also with our leadership retreat. And we know that these experiences will definitely be valuable to you. So thank you all so much. You can go back behind the glass. But they'll still be with us. Right? So let's get into some of the things that we're doing here and some celebrations for this month. Next slide. June is Pride Month, and so we proudly stand with our LGBTQIA+ students, staff, families, and community members. And pride is not just about a celebration. It's certainly a commitment to dignity, a commitment to inclusion, and the right to be seen and the right to be heard. And at DPS, we believe every scholar deserves to feel safe. They feel they deserve to feel affirmed and empowered to be their true authentic self. And so this month and every month in Durham Public Schools, we affirm our commitment to equity, inclusion, and respect for all. Next slide. June 19th was Juneteenth, a day which we celebrate freedom, culture, and community. Juneteenth marks the day in 1865 when the last enslaved African-American learned that they were free. Certainly a powerful moment in our nation's history. As a district, we are committed to equity and excellence, and so we honor the legacy of resilience and resistance that Juneteenth represents. And so let us inspire us, I'm sorry, let Juneteenth inspire us to continue creating inclusive, affirming spaces where every student's history and identity are valued. Next slide. Many of you know, we just completed our graduation season, and our amazing seniors have concluded their educational journey with DPS and culminated their accomplishments with graduation. And so I'm proud to share that the class of 2025 has earned an incredible $72.2 million in scholarships. That's nearly $4.9 million more than last year. And so this is certainly a true testament of the talent, the testament of the determination and hard work of our students, families, educators, and school communities. This achievement reflects our shared commitment to opening doors of opportunity for every graduate. So congratulations to our seniors. You certainly make us proud. Next slide. Sun meals have, oh, well, oh, we want to highlight one school in particular. Southern School of Energy and Sustainability led the way in these scholarships with an incredible $23 million earned. And this is the highest total among all DPS high schools. I encourage everyone to visit our social media to see our Scholar Securing Dollar series. Also invite you to visit our website for graduation photo galleries and senior spotlights. Every single school is highlighted on our webpage. Whether college, career, armed services, or another path awaits our graduates, we certainly wish them well and wish them the very best. Next slide. Now we can talk about summer meals. Sun meals have begun. This is an opportunity for free summer meals for our scholars. June 16th through August 1st, that's Monday through Friday. Free meals for all kids, 18 and under, and there's no ID or registration required. And you can find those locations on our website. Or if you have any questions, you can call our School Nutrition Services at 919-560-2370. We have a total of about 38 sites, and those sites, between those sites, they are serving breakfast and lunch. And so let's continue to pass the word going to those sites so you can identify those sites, pass the word, and let's keep our kids fed all summer long. Next slide. Major congratulations to Forest View Elementary's Odyssey for the Mine team, which placed seventh out of 61 teams at the Odyssey of Mine World Finals at Michigan State University in May. Get this, there were over 700 teams from around the globe at World Finals. And Forest View definitely represented Durham Public Schools with pride. They competed with teams from Poland, South Korea, China, Switzerland, Hong Kong, France, and others from around the United States. And they held their own. After placing, after placing first at both the regional and state competitions this past spring, we knew that they would have a strong showing at the World Finals, and they did just that. So congratulations to this team and the amazing teachers that worked with them as well as their families. Next slide. Congratulations to Hillside High School's Josiah Jennings, who was awarded Best Actor at the 2025 Deepak Rising Star Award last month. And just earlier this week, Josiah took the stage in New York City for the Jimmy Awards. The Jimmy Awards elevate the importance of theater arts education in schools and reward excellence in student performance. Josiah was recognized for outstanding performance in an ensemble for his collaboration during the Jimmy Awards program. We certainly are proud of you, Josiah, and wish you the very best. You have, definitely have a bright future. I was able to watch that live via YouTube, and he definitely made us proud. So congratulations, Josiah. Next slide. Yes, you are seeing double. You see a double because we have a two-time track and field state champion from Riverside. Congratulations to Philip Blum, who earns top state awards, top state honors at the North Carolina High School Athletic Association for a 3200 meter and 1600 meter races this spring. Job well done, Philip. Proud of you. Next slide. There's another champion in DPS, Simone Arrington, who attends J.D. Clement Early College and is a member of the Southern Spartans Track Team. Simone is a North Carolina High School Athletic Association 3A 100-meter hurdles state champion. So proud certainly is an understatement. Congratulations to Simone. Next slide. We are excited to welcome the class of 2038. Right. At our Countdown to Kindergarten event that will be held on Tuesday, July 8th, at the Museum of Life and Science. This is a fun, information-filled event to get students and families ready for their first day of school. We want to see all of our rising kindergartners, their families as well. You can check out those flyers on our social media and our calendar of events to register. In addition, stay tuned to our website and social media for our special Countdown to Kindergarten series, providing resources to ensure that our new kindergartners are certainly ready for school. And a huge shout out and thank you to the Museum of Life and Science for their partnership in this work. Next slide. Since 2013, DPS has offered an application-based summer newcomer academy for students who are experiencing their first year in US schools. And so this year, on June 16th, nearly 150 3rd through 9th grade students are being treated to culturally and academically enlightening events and activities about Durham and America. This academy is designed around research and practices around language learning in social and academic settings, building a bridge between cultures represented by our English language learners who create and the diverse fabric of DPS that we so much value here in this community. The focus is on experimental and project-based learning, grade-level language and content in English Language Arts, and social studies, science, and math. The academy is facilitated by our very own teachers, and it runs through July 1st. DPS students speak a total of more than 100 languages, and we are very proud to serve students and families from all over the world. Next slide. As I mentioned earlier, nope, I didn't mention that earlier. I'm just skipping slides tonight. Congratulations to Rustina Sharp, who's our STEM teacher science specialist at Eno Valley Elementary School, who was just selected from one of 15 outstanding educators from 14 counties across North Carolina as a member of the 5th Cohort Crew 5 of the North Carolina Space Education Ambassadors Program. This network now includes 75 educators from 44 counties who are dedicated to integrating space science and STEM education into our local communities. Throughout the 2526 academic year, Crew 5 ambassadors will explore NASA's six mission sections through interactive virtual sessions featuring NASA subject matter experts. Ambassadors will also design and implement creative strategies to share these resources with fellow educators in their schools, districts, and beyond. And a major highlight of the experience will be the Summer 2026 Visit to NASA Langley, where Crew 5 will tour research facilities and engage directly with NASA scientists, engineers, and educators. So congratulations to Rustina Sharp from Eno Valley, representing us well. Back to some more summer learning. Again, for our educators, learning still happens. Next slide, during the summer, and this time, our teachers are the students. SPLASH, which is an acronym for Summer Professional Learning Academy, supporting high expectations. For our certified educators across the district, launched last week. SPLASH empowers teachers to bring equity, innovation, and research-based practices to their classrooms. This investment in their learning is an investment in our scholars. So thank you to our educators that were engaged in our SPLASH PD last week. Speaking of summer learning, summer learning continues as we held our annual leadership retreat this week, uniting our assistant principals, principals, district leaders for three powerful days of learning and collaboration. Guided by the theme, reset, refocus, and reignite, the retreat offered a space for leaders to reflect on past successes, align priorities for the year ahead, and renew their shared commitment to student-centered excellence. Participants engage in dynamic keynote sessions, interactive workshops, and focused planning design, purposely to strengthen our instructional leadership and also to build cohesion in terms of our school-based strategies. The retreat concluded today with a renewed sense of purpose, a refocus on our North Star leading us toward excellence and student achievement, and a collective charge to lead with clarity, passion, and impact. I certainly want to thank our entire DPS team for the role that they played in ensuring that this was a successful retreat. We had an amazing three days together, and I'm super excited about what's to come with this school system. You can view some of those photos on our social media pages. Next slide. And then last, but certainly not least, if you have, if you are not aware of Senate Bill 227, this is a bill that was passed by the Senate 28 to 18 back in March, March 11th. And it passed the House just yesterday, 67 to 48. And this is a bill that's attacking, I will say, continuing the attack on DEI. And some language from the bill says the following. Whereas so-called DEI programs promote a worldview that demands people, especially young people, to judge others based on the race, sex, and other factors, and attack true diversity of thought, stifle opportunity, and stoke division. That is not what we're about here in Durham Public Schools. We will continue to be a welcoming community. If you have not heard, I've said equity probably about three times already. And we will continue with that focus. And please know, our goal is to make sure that we're creating environments to ensure that our students are able to think critically for themselves. And a lot of this came from critical race theory, you know, which we don't teach in our schools either. And so we're not concerned about that, but what we are concerned about is teaching, instead of critical race theory, we're concerned about teaching our students to think critically for themselves. So I think some more will be said about this bill on this evening. We've gotten some information for our board members to ensure that we're able to respond to this bill in a major way that does not compromise our values as a school system, but most importantly, the values that this community so holds dear to them. During the listening and learning sessions, when I During the listening and learning sessions, when I asked the question, what are you most proud of? Or what's one of the things that's really going well? What do you value about Durham Public Schools? Overwhelmingly, they value the diversity of our school system. And so we will continue to honor that and ensure that nothing will harm our students. Every single student in this district deserves to learn in an environment where they feel safe. But most importantly, they deserve to learn full and accurate history. And last slide, as I conclude this month's update and mark the end of my first year Superintendent of Durham Public Schools. As a matter of fact, I was just telling Bettina yesterday, you know how things pop up on your timelines and your phones and things like that. Yesterday was the day, a year ago yesterday was the day I got the call from Bettina offering me this position. And so I want to take a moment to just reflect on that journey that we've taken together. And I shared some of this with the team this morning. This year has brought both meaningful progress and certainly some real challenges. We've celebrated major wins, including historic scholarships totals, which I just mentioned of our graduates, innovative programs and initiatives. And we've also deepened our community partnerships that certainly reflects the strength and resilience and pride of Durham. And at the same time, we face some difficult conversations, particularly around trust, around equity and sustainability, challenges that have pushed us to listen more deeply, more boldly, and to lead with integrity. We face those challenges head-on, and I hope you have seen our efforts to respond to what we've heard during those listening and learning sessions, particularly around transparency and the need for more communication. If you recall, shortly after, speaking specifically around some of our budget challenges, if you recall, shortly after our new CFO arrived back in November, just several weeks on the job, and once he was in a place to share with the community where we were financially, we held a press conference, again, just wanting to make sure that we are being transparent, but also upfront with our communication. I will say this, through it all, I certainly remain filled with hope, even though I often say, and I tell the team, "Hope is not a strategy." But I see hope in our educators and hope in our students and our staff, who show up every single day with purpose. Hope in our families who stand beside us and partner with us. And most importantly, hope in our scholars. They're brilliant. I'm telling you, when I go into these classrooms and have conversations with them, one of them is sitting right in front of us this evening. They're brilliant. They're capable, and they're full of limitless potential. And I do believe, together, we will continue to reset, refocus, and reignite our commitment to ensuring that every child in Durham thrives. And I will tell you, the future of DPS is bright, and I'm certainly honored to lead alongside you. And I can't wait to continue to work with you. And I can't wait to see where we go as a school system and as a community together. So thank you all so much. That concludes my remarks.
Thanks. Thank you, Dr. Lewis. Yes, colleagues. Before we move to the next item on our agenda, I want to express appreciation for Ms. Mary Ann Masamba for joining us tonight from the Superintendent's Advisory Council to give student voice to the conversations that we have tonight. We look forward to your participation. Thank you for being here. The next item on our agenda is agenda review and approval. I'd like us to, I'd like the board to consider modifying the agenda to move Item B off the consent agenda to the academic section of our agenda. Right after is Item B for academic services for DPS, after DPS Code of Character Conduct and Support. And I would like us to table until the board is ready with the superintendent the guidelines for communication, Item F. Maybe consideration our board retreat, maybe the August 14th work session, depending on how we work through that. Are there any other changes board members would like? Oh, Ms. Umstead submitted the resolution. You want to speak to that?
Yes, if the board was of interest, I'd like to submit a resolution against House Senate Bill 277 that urges the governor to veto the bill.
Would it be okay for that item to go as 3B under Board of Education?
That works for me.
Any other changes? Okay, so I will accept a motion.
Move approval of the agenda as amended.
Second. It's been moved by Ms. Byer, seconded by Mr. Tab to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, use the same sign. It passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda is the Board Regular Monthly Meeting Minutes from May 22nd to 2025. Ms. Chavez just sent Ms. Smith a correction for those minutes. If there are no other corrections, do you want me to call out what that correction is? Ms. Chavez, can you speak to that? Sorry.
There's just one little thing there's are missing from work session. And, but I did have one other thing, actually, on the vote for the personnel report. I'm going to pull it back up. It was approved 6-1. I think we need to say who voted against it or who voted for it and against it. If it's not unanimous, is that correct in the notes? Okay. Okay, thank you. That was it.
Okay.
I'd move approval of the minutes from May 22nd, 2025 with the edits.
Second. It's been moved by Ms. Byer to approve the minutes from May 22nd, 2025 with the edits. And seconded by Ms. Carter Oden. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, use the same sign. It passes unanimously. Thanks you all. The next item on our agenda is general public comment. Each. Also sheets, but I will find them. A quick review of the rules. First, please state your name. You're speaking for an organization, please state your name and the name of the organization. Second, speakers are asked to present their comments in a specified time. Tonight, you have three minutes. When the yellow light comes on, you'll have one minute left to start winding up your remarks. When the red light comes on, it will beep, which indicates your time is up. Complaints about named staff, students, and parents should not be voiced in open session. However, we are very interested in hearing your concerns with regard to public education, safety of students, or the operation of the school system. Finally, board members will listen carefully and consider the comments, but we do not engage in a discussion with speakers. Our first speaker is Vera Daniels, followed by Nadia Rajub. I apologize if I'm mispronouncing anybody's name.
Thank you. I yield my time to Nadia Rajub. Are we allowed to give things? Okay, yeah. Hi, my name's Nadia Rajub. I'm a member of the community and also a co-founder of the DPS Allergy Committee. We are a grassroots effort here representing families and students who have life-threatening allergies and attend Durham Public Schools. So basically, we have started this initiative back in January, initially through working with the former Assistant Director of Nutrition, who's no longer with DPS. But we ended up corralling about 60 members of the community who were really interested in talking about their experience related to allergies within DPS. When you look across the country and across the district, I think, you know, whether we talk about allergies today or tomorrow, it's going to continue to be a very important issue as more and more children become diagnosed with allergies. But really, there isn't one district or one state who's really figured out the secret sauce to this. So it's always an opportunity for striving for improvements. So the goal here today is to kind of take a first step to a public statement. We've had the opportunity to work very closely with nurses, educators, administrators, nutrition, families. But we want to see opportunity for closer partnership as we actually start to look for really wonderful opportunities for low-budget, meaningful changes that align with the policy today. When we look at the policy, actually, we'll get into that in just a second, but just to talk a little bit about the statistics around allergies. So as a mom of a daughter who's four years old, who has multiple food allergies, I've become all too familiar with these statistics. But if you don't have someone like this in your family, why would you know? Data is showing that in the past decade, food allergies are increasing at a rate of about 50%. And why this is important in schools is that the data are showing that children, 25% of children will actually have their first allergic reaction in a school, meaning they've never had any reaction. And so that immediate response and opportunity is needed in the school setting. In terms of prevalence, they estimate that 1 in 13 children have severe food allergies. That doesn't even include your latex, bees, other types of allergies that exist. And that's about two children per classroom. When you just do the back-of-the-napkin math and think about the enrollment rate into DPS in the last school year, you're looking at about 31,000 children. That does not include your pre-K enrollment, and that's about 2,400 students within your school system who have known severe food allergies. Many people will think, okay, food allergies or allergies are happening. These reactions could be in the cafeteria. Well, only 13% of reactions happening in schools are actually happening in the cafeteria. 83% of the reactions are happening in the classroom. So therein lies the opportunity for sort of a two-pronged approach, looking at prevention of these reactions and ensuring consistent protocols across the district. What we're so proud of is that the fact that North Carolina and DPS does have policies that lead to accommodations and protocols around food allergies. Yet these policies at the state and the district level lack specificity and protocols and required resources that will allow for consistency across the schools. Within the policy, it states that each principal is responsible for coming up with four key areas to address food allergies in their school, and that's over 50 different protocols across the district. This leads to a lot of challenges for families, but also to the staff within DPS. We hear from a lot of families that it's school-specific, and that's a large number. But then you get into class and teacher-specific, that's a large multiplier. We've been fortunate to be able to do multiple interviews across the Durham community, and we've identified five key areas of opportunity where we believe that you can have low-cost, no-cost solutions that align with the current policy, that can be implemented using the resources that you have here within the Durham community, but also free resources from food allergy research and education, which invests a significant amount of money into providing resources to schools and families. And so we have been working very closely, again, with many people throughout. And as part of your packets, you see these five areas. We're already making way in terms of updating the website to ensure that all of the medical forms are listed in one location, as opposed to families having to search or reach out to multiple people to find. These are simple changes that can make meaningful impact. So again, our goal is to just make everyone aware that we're here, and we're happy to be here, and we're very grateful that who we've talked to has been saying yes. How can we help? I think it's about resources and attention to this. So we do have a Facebook group. We have an email address for those in the community here today, if you'd like to be part of our email address or sign up for Facebook. But we are the DPS Allergy Committee. You can find us on Facebook. And we're looking forward to more partnership and progress as we work together to make DPS a continued, a safe, and wonderful place for all children. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Karina Block. And Anne Fields. Karina's first. Karina. Karina Block.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Good evening. My name is Karina Block, and I'm a parent of three DPS students. And I'm also a member of the People's Alliance Education Action Team. So I was encouraged today to see restorative practices included in the Code of Conduct proposal on today's agenda. So in my advocacy work, I've strongly supported the full and equitable implementation of restorative practices across DPS. In Slide 2 of the presentation, it emphasized that restorative practices is grounded in mutual accountability. And I believe that that principle must be reflected in the form of transparent and accessible data. Unfortunately, today's presentation lacked the concrete information needed to assess progress. So I urge the Central Office and Student Support Services to provide and share clear metrics along with the proposed timeline. For example, who has been, who has received restorative practices training? How many teachers at each school have been trained? What is the timeline and definition for 25 to 50% implementation? If restorative practices are to succeed in transforming school culture, they must be backed by data that reflects both investment and outcomes. Transparency, as Dr. Lewis said, is key to building trust across our school communities. And so I just asked the board, please consider that and ask for that along with these presentations. Thank you.
Good evening, board members. My name is Anne Fields. I'm a Durham resident, a DPS parent, and one of the founders of Durham Football Club, a new nonprofit soccer club based in and for Durham. In addition to my full-time job as a social worker, I work directly with families and youth across the city. I'm here today to voice concern and offer partnership regarding the growing disconnect between Durham Public Schools and the local community, and in today's instance, in regards to after-school care planning and implementation. You will hear a presentation later this evening, which proposes a way to expand after-school programs to 200 more students. Many more will still be left out. This is, per my understanding, is through increased ratios in the programs, not more programming. There is a clear and pressing need for greater transparency, communication, and collaboration in how DPS approaches extended learning time and wraparound services. Many families, especially working-class and historically underserved, are struggling to access consistent, high-quality after-school programs that align with their schedules, transportation needs, and cultural values. Yet, rather than leveraging the wealth of talent and resources from trusted, community-based organizations, we've often seen walls go up. Organizations like mine and many others in Durham have reached out, submitted proposals, and expressed a willingness to partner, including a financial benefit to a district with a budget crisis, only to be met with limited response or bureaucratic roadblocks. This is not a capacity issue. It is a community trust and access issue. When decisions are made without authentic community engagement, the solutions often don't reflect the reality on the ground. Parents aren't being heard. Community organizations aren't being invited in, and most importantly, kids are missing out. So I'm here with a call, not just a critique. Let's build something better together. Reopen channels for real community partnership and after-school care that doesn't take years to get off the ground. Create a transparent process for CBOs to apply, collaborate, and serve. And include parent voices, not just in surveys, but in the decision-making rooms. Durham has the people. It has the passion. Let's stop closing doors that should be open. Thank you for your time and for your commitment to our students and our future.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jennifer Girish.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Girish. I'm with the Durham Advocates for Exceptional Children. I have three amazing children in DPS. I cede my time to Rebecca Ferguson.
Rebecca Ferguson, followed by Marty Tricks.
Good evening, board and Dr. Lewis. My name's Rebecca Ferguson. I'm a parent of a rising first grader.
I'm a parent of a rising first grader with disabilities at Morehead. And I had to pivot and change my notes here because I want to thank you for removing Item B from the consent agenda. I had prepared remarks on behalf of the DAEC to request that that be removed from the consent agenda so that we could have more community input to the policy changes. So bear with me as I adapt my remarks on the fly here. Over the past few days, we have hurried to review and respond to the revised policy 4326 on the use of seclusion and restraint in DPS. The revised policy has only been available, as we can tell, for a few weeks, and to our knowledge, there has not been any previous opportunity for public input. So we thank you for taking and for pivoting on that. Since you've shown the willingness to consider this policy further, I want to share some recommendations from our organization, and with the goal of making the policy safer for students and staff, and from our perspective, safer for students with disabilities who are disproportionately impacted by the potential harm of policies like these. The current revised policy is definitely an improvement, yet after reviewing federal guidelines, state law, and the research of leading organizations around this issue, we know that there are specific improvements that will make this policy safer for our entire community at DPS. We emailed you a document with specific suggestions and the associated research and citations, but I wanted to highlight a few of those here today. DPS should, for example, prohibit prone restraint and chokeholds, or any restraint that restricts a child's ability to breathe freely, something that is allowed by the current policy. Require all instances of physical restraint, mechanical restraint, seclusion, and isolation as those terms are defined in the policy to be reported to principals and to parents. The Board should also consider that for children with disabilities who may not be able to communicate well, who may not fully understand social dynamics, and who may not be able to self-advocate, that there is not a meaningful difference between your intention to differentiate seclusion and isolation. So we welcome you to revisit those definitions as you have them currently. Under the current revised policy, my son, who's nonverbal and has communication difficulties, could be isolated for an entire day without it even being required to be reported to me. I think that's probably got to be scary for any parent in the room. It's especially problematic and scary for me when my child can't communicate it on his own behalf. In closing, I would like to remind the Board that many organizations, including the U.S. Department of Education, say that policies like these should, and I'm quoting, "ensure that any use of restraint or seclusion in schools does not occur except when there is the threat of imminent danger or serious physical harm to the student or others." This is not what the DPS policy currently says, but it could. So you've already made steps in the right direction with the current revised policy, and now more so by welcoming more community input. And so again, we thank you for that. We look forward to hearing more community input there, allowing you guys the time to take the documents that we have shared with you and to make a final revised policy that makes our schools, students, and staff safer. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Marty Triggs from Hope Valley Elementary. I'm going to cede my time to Ramsey Ritchie.
Ramsey Ritchie.
Hi, everyone. I'm Ramsey Ritchie from the Hope Valley Elementary PTA, and I'm going to cede my time to Katie Barnhill.
Okay. Katie.
Good evening. I'll be quick. My name is Katie Barnhill. I'm a single parent to a rising third grader at Hope Valley Elementary, a member of the Hope Valley PTA, a former science teacher at Hillside High School, and live within the so-called family responsibility zone for our school. At Hope Valley, we are worried about losing bus service to Colonial Townhouse Apartments and Valley Terrace for the 25-26 school year because of the family responsibility zone policy. While this policy was designed to limit bus service for students with a safe route to school, the walk to Hope Valley from these communities is not a safe route to school. Where students need to walk or bike to Hope Valley from those communities, they would have to navigate a dangerous sidewalk and intersection network that lack basic safety features, which are detailed in the Durham Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee Report, details that we're providing in tonight's packet. We know that these improvements are the responsibility of the city, which is why we are advocating to retain bus service first and foremost, with no changes to bus services considered again until the city makes those critical improvements. Additionally, rapidly evolving federal policies targeting members of our community put some students at risk of harassment, to put it mildly. The potential bus-free zone could not come at a more difficult and vulnerable time for these at-risk communities. So again, we advocate to retain bus services for those communities. As a reminder, Hope Valley is a year-round school with classes beginning on July 21st or in a little over three weeks' time. That is unlikely to be sufficient for the physical safety improvements on this proposed walking or biking route to school. So in summary, we emphatically ask that the district preserve bus service for Colonial Townhouse Apartments and Valley Terrace for the 25-26 school year and beyond. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Jocelyn Dawson. And Terrence White.
Hello, I'm Jocelyn Dawson. I'm the president of the PTA at Hope Valley Elementary. I'm going to share a comment tonight from parent Magali Mayorga, which was originally in Spanish. Her comments reflect many concerns from our parent community, which we've provided to you along with the traffic report. Magali says, "I wanted to be at the meeting, but due to work, I cannot attend. Still, I'm leaving my message. I beg you, please don't take the bus away from the children. My babysitter can only pick up my son at the bus stop, and I don't have anyone else who can take or pick him up. I work two jobs, and it's very difficult for me. I know that many moms have the same problem. My son is too young to be walking alone. Even if there were lots of older kids, he still wouldn't go walking. I don't let him walk because even on the bus, they fight and call each other names, let alone walking." Thank you very much.
Sorry.
You can start anytime.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Trey Lawrence White, an honors graduate of Durham Public Schools and a current DPS employee of five years. I serve as the AS400 Administrator and Site Security Officer, a position I've held for the past three years. I'm here tonight to speak on not only the RIF, but shed light on the fact that there are other harmful practices by leadership that negatively impact DPS staff, students, and the broader community. These issues will need public conversation if we truly want to see the change and create a better, healthier, and more equitable working environment for all. My role is being eliminated effective June 30th, 2025, due to the RIF. I'm here not just for myself, but for everyone and every employee affected by this process, many of whom don't feel safe speaking up. Let's be clear. The budget crisis, which has led to job losses, family instability, and mental and physical strain for employees like me, is not just a result of numbers, it's a result of mismanagement by the very leadership entrusted with the district's future. And that mismanagement was allowed to continue because of the Board's failed to properly oversee the action of that leadership. The promises made about transparency, support, and alternative employment have not been kept. I have reached out to the superintendent and others in leadership with either no response or very vague correspondence. You were told here at this podium that there was a crystal-clear plan for me, but that plan has led to silence, stress, and job loss. If Durham Public Schools stands by its Growing Together initiative, then it's time for real action. Equity, transparency, and accountability can not only be applied to some staff, they must apply to leadership and to this Board as well. This is not the end of my story. I will be back to continue to speak out, advocate, and hold you all accountable until these systems improve for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our public comment. The next item on our agenda are the consent agenda items.
Move approval of the consent agenda. And since we had some changes, I'll read them out. Rethink ed contract, the contracts for district-wide lawn care and grounds maintenance for the 25-26 school year, school nutrition services bids for school year 25-26, policy 2231, the policy committee, financial policies review, credit recovery changes, plan for piloting non-state licensed after-school programs in eight elementary schools, the 24-25 budget amendment number two, and the 25-26 interim budget resolution.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Byers, seconded by Ms. Harold Goff, to approve consent agenda items, rethink ed contract, contracts for district-wide lawn care and grounds maintenance for the 25-26 school year, school nutrition services bid for school year 25-26, policy 2231, policy committee, financial policies review, credit recovery changes, plan for piloting non-state licensed after-school programs in eight elementary schools, 24-25 budget amendment number two, and the 25-26 interim budget resolution. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, use the same sign. It passes unanimously. Thanks, everybody. Next item on our agenda is a safety update with Sheriff Burkhead. Thank you for joining us this evening. We're glad you're here. You're welcome. You come in wherever you want to come, bring your deputies with you, wherever you want them to be, introduce them, however you want this to go. We have about 30 minutes allotted for this conversation. Colley, that's for us. Sheriff Burkhead, that's also for you, too. We want to go home tonight, even though we could discuss school safety for a really long time. And we really appreciate this conversation that we're getting ready to have.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening to you, to Board members, to Superintendent Dr. Lewis, to staff, to visitors, and those certainly who are watching us over our YouTube channel. Thank you. It's an honor and a privilege for me to be able to come before you tonight. I would like to note that this is the first opportunity I've had as your sheriff for Durham County to come and speak directly to the school board, and I really appreciate it. As you've noted, I do have several of my SROs with me tonight. I will give them 15 seconds to introduce themselves, say their name, and acknowledge which school they are assigned to, starting with Commander of the SRO Program, Captain Hinton.
Good evening. I'm Captain Hinton, the commander of the Durham County Sheriff's Office School Resource Officer Division.
Evening. I'm Sergeant Boudreaux with Durham County Sheriff's Office, part of the School Resource Division Supervision Team. I'm over the high schools. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Sergeant Larry Watkins, and I'm one of the supervisors over the middle schools.
Well, I'm Deputy Moore, deputy here at Durham County Sheriff's Office. I'm a SRO at Shepherd Middle School.
Well, I'm the SRO at Neil Middle School.
All right. Thank you all very much, and thank you for allowing them to introduce themselves. A little different tonight, because every time Deputy Moore from Shepherd introduces himself, I usually get a round of applause. So I want to go ahead and note that. Yeah. But no, thank you. He and all of them are stars in our unit. So I won't be before you long, but I have prepared a presentation. I think you have it there before you. I'll just give you a little bit of history about the SRO program. It started back in 2003, and it's worth noting that at that time, it was a collaboration with Durham Police Department as well. In 2019, Durham Police Department decided, roughly 2019, early 2020, to pull out. And since then, Durham County Sheriff's Office, under my leadership, has been partnering with DPS to strengthen and continue the SRO program. And our emphasis, beginning in 2019, was focused on collaboration, collaboration with Board members at that time, and we still enjoy that partnership and collaboration today, to make sure that our schools are a safe and learning environment. We're not there to criminalize behavior, and we do refer and lean on our partners, principals, our APs, counselors, and our students to follow the codes. We don't do school discipline. That's not our role, but we support our teachers and administrators in their efforts to keep our schools safe, as safe as possible. And so, next slide, please. We are currently in, next slide, please. Yep. We are assigned to our five high schools here in Durham, nine of our middle schools, and two specialty schools. We are staffed by a number of individuals who are certified as SROs. Captain Hinton, one captain, one lieutenant, two sergeants, two corporals, and 13 deputies. I think our total allocation for FTEs is 26. 26, and we currently are experiencing 11 or 12 vacancies. So we're working hard. We just graduated an academy a couple of weeks ago, and a couple of those individuals who graduated are interested in SROs. And we are also accepting lateral transfers, lateral transfers who are already certified as law enforcement officers working for other agencies. As a matter of fact, I signed one today. A young lady is very interested in coming to work for the Durham County Sheriff's Office in the capacity of an SRO, so we are in the process of reviewing her file as we speak. So we're growing. We're growing our staff, and we're certainly trying to retain and keep our current staff as much as possible. Next slide, please. SRO training, as you know, is really mandated by the state of North Carolina. It's a basic 40-hour SRO training that our SROs go through. Those topics include de-escalation, dealing with exceptional children, juvenile mental health, and school age issues, and we go over FERPA and other things as well. But here in Durham County, and since I've been sheriff...
Sheriff, can we get the next slide, please?
Next slide, please.
That's where you are. Go ahead.
All right. Who's running the...
You got to tell them.
So I got to say next slide.
It's our students tonight, and we appreciate their support.
All right. Thank you. All right. So let me talk about the training. As you can see there, this training is mandated by the state of North Carolina. But as I was about to say, as you read that slide, here in Durham County, we go above and beyond and have done so since 2019. We have our summer training as well, where we meet with our superintendent, we meet with our principals and our APs and some teachers to talk about topics and train on specific topics that they suggest to us. And our SROs go through a refresher course. They also attend the SRO Training Academy or the Summer Conference, so they can get new topics going on, not only here in North Carolina, but across the country. And so we pride ourselves on being trained and staying abreast of any changes in the SRO curriculum. Next slide, please. Yep. I just mentioned the joint training that we just talked about. It's part of our, it's actually part of our MOU, and we review the MOU every year, of course, and we do this training on an annual basis. Let's see. We also work with our local nonprofits to make sure that we are aware of all the resources that are available for our students, and we refer students to them. I'll talk more about that in just a moment. But our MOU encourages training, and like I mentioned a moment ago, topics that teachers, principals, and you all want us to see, such as restorative justice, I heard that mentioned a moment ago, Privacy Act, cultural competencies and dealing with students with disabilities as well. And so, again, we try to go above and beyond with our training here at... And so, again, we try to go above and beyond with our training here at Durham County Sheriff's Office SRO program. Next slide, please. We all are aware that Raise the Age took effect in 2019. And it really overhauled North Carolina's juvenile delinquency program or processes. Gave law enforcement different options for addressing behavior or criminal behavior. And those three options are no charge, refer to resources, or do a juvenile petition. And we work closely with the resources that we have here in Durham County to make sure that we do not criminalize behavior, we do not criminalize mental health. As a matter of fact, in a moment you're here, I'm going to give you some numbers as I get through some of the history and some of our goals and objectives. Our no charge, we refer everything back to school discipline as much as possible, work with our school administrators. We also have conversations with parents, make sure parents are aware of whatever infraction has, has occurred. We've got resources that we refer to, DIAC, Drug Education and Counseling. And we also work closely with the guidance counselors in the schools. And as I mentioned a moment ago, the community-based resources such as teen court, diversion programs, our youth home rise program, and then certainly juvenile justice. Next slide, please. Those are the programs I just mentioned.
You ready for the next one?
I think I am. Next slide, please. All right, here we go. 2024, 25 school year. We responded to 621 calls. 613 were referred to school administration for discipline. 663 referrals to community resources, and 50 juvenile petitions were taken out. I'd like to note here that Durham County Sheriff's Office SRO program has the highest referral rate in the state of North Carolina. And that's the data that's captured by the state. And we are number one in referring our young people away from the criminal justice system to get the help and the assistance that they need. We had 23 drug possession calls, all of those were referred to the DIAC, the Drug Education and Awareness Program. And we also unfortunately had some serious crimes, three arson, one robbery, two sexual assaults, 29 threats of mass destruction, eight guns, and 22 knives and seven car accidents. We had a busy year, but a productive year. I'm, I'm happy to say that we were able to avoid any of our mass destruction, any, any school shootings and things of that nature. But, but the stat that I want you to focus on is the referrals. Again, we're here to put the resource back in the School Resource Officer program. And so our officers pride themselves on staying abreast of what resources are available, developing those connections with our students and, and our parents so that we can refer those young men and women to the services that they need. I'm going to step back and ask Captain Hinton, have I left out anything as far as the presentation goes? He just reminded me that we only had four actual arrests out of all of those encounters and four, four secure custodies as well. Again, a testament to us working with our juvenile justice staff and their team, again, not to criminalize these young people, but to get them the help that they need. I think a couple of them had a story they wanted to share from their school, is that right? A brief, a brief story.
Absolutely.
A brief story.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Again, my name is Deputy Moore. I, I love, absolutely love being a school resource officer. One thing I love about being a school resource officer is the bridging the gap with the youth in law enforcement. Because I'm no longer looked at as a officer with a gun on his waist. I'm no longer Deputy Moore, I'm Demo. Okay? And they can come up to me, shake my hand, we can laugh, we can tell jokes, okay? They come to me almost every day during school with their own complaints. They're our young citizens in the community because they trust me, okay? And that speaks boundaries about our program, the SRO program, that we were able to bridge that gap with the youth. And they don't see us no more as the bad guys, but the good guys. Because we are, we're there to help them, all right? We're there to teach them, we're there to be their mentors, all right? And that's what we're out here to do, all right? Thank you so much.
Next slide, please. All right, we have countless stories, and they're being a little shy tonight, but the point is.
Good evening, it's a pleasure to be here, pleasure to be a part of the Durham County Sheriff's Office School Resource Division. The men and women work tirelessly every day with these students and staff to create a safe environment for learning. Do want to emphasize on the data. The data, the last three years, has been trending downward. 2022, 2023, we had 2,008 calls for service. And you see here in this presentation, we're down in the 621. So last year was 841, this year is even lower. So we're trending downward on the calls for service. That means the school is handling more school discipline and, and other matters that are not making its way to our law enforcement officers. In addition, our referral rates are rising. So we're, we're trending downward on the calls for service, which you want, and you're increasing on the resources that are being referred. So like the sheriff said, he has created this memorandum of understanding, along with the superintendent, that creates a collaboration where we want to be, put the resource back in the School Resource Division. Thank you.
I'll close out by saying this. The Durham County Sheriff's Office School Resource Officer Program is a model, not just for North Carolina, but for across the United States. Our SROs take the time, and I emphasize time, to talk to these students. We're not out here to charge, we're out here to be a resource for them. We're not out here to bash them, we're out here to show them the right way in which they need to do things. And throughout the years that I've been in this program, it's been a phenomenal program. Thank you.
Thank you all for sharing, and we do pride ourselves in being a model. As you may know, we're all, I am all over the state of North Carolina talking about the great things that we're doing here in Durham, certainly in DPS, and how our SRO program is front and center in the progress of our students here at DPS. And as Captain Hinton mentioned, we get calls from across the country about what we're doing. As you know, all this is public, public data. And so when they see our referral rates and our call for service, and they're like, what are, what are you guys doing in the bull city? And we're more than happy, these men and women standing behind me and part of our SRO program are not shy about sharing our successes with their colleagues across the state and across the country. So at this point, I will pause and take any questions, should there be any. Thank you.
Colleagues, question? You want to go first, Mr. Tab? I'll let you go first, you're going to go first this time, go ahead, Mr. Tab.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you so very much. To Sheriff Burkhead, thank you so very much for being here. I'm glad you finally made it. And a long time coming, but you're here, and we want to make the best of this. I will encourage my colleagues as well, that now that he's here, we get a chance to really, really ask the questions that we really need to ask about our sheriff and our SRO program. So I do have a few questions. You know me very well, so I'll go right to, to the question. Being in the school system, as long as I've been in the school system, I worked with the SROs, and I had a great relationship, and schools had a great relationship with the SROs. But there were times when teachers did not know where to cross the line, when they needed a SRO and when they needed an administrator. Do you find that that's still happening in the school, and what can we do to make that transition better?
I'm going to refer, defer to one of them because they're in the schools every day. I have an administrative answer in what we work on, but I'll let them answer.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tab. When you call an SRO, it needs to be more specific for a law enforcement function. Like the MOU says, we cannot enforce school rules. If you have a kid that is refusing to take his hat off, or refusing to give you his cellphone, you can't utilize the SRO to enforce that school rule, okay? If a principal's going there because of an altercation or disagreement, the SRO will accompany them for safety purposes, make sure nothing happens. But the best way I can explain it is, if it violates North Carolina general statutes, then yes, we'll come. If it violates DPS policy, we may assist and come and stand by for safety protocol, but not to enforce school rules.
Okay, is there anything that the school system can do to making sure that our employees or our teachers and our staff understand through training or something, something of that nature?
Yeah, that's a great, that's a great question, that's actually part of our summer training. So when we're meeting with Dr. Lewis, our superintendent, when we're meeting with the principals and APs, we talk about the best use of our SROs and how we're there to support them in the mission of keeping order in the classroom, order in the hallway, in the school in general. But we're not the disciplinarians, and so we give them tips as well on how to handle a situation. And once it crosses that threshold, that it's either threatening, or it's a criminal violation, then they call us and step in. But we're, we're always going to be around to support them. And that training happens every year, and also happens organically throughout the school year when situations pop up.
Okay, stay right there, here's my next question for you, Sheriff Burkhead. There's a lot of talk about the HART program and possibly HART programs coming into schools. Where do you see the relationship of, of partnership with SROs and the HART program?
Yeah, again, another great question, and actually, that's one of those organic relationships that has evolved over the past three years. I think HART's been in, in existence for three years. The SROs, Captain Hinton tells me often, that we'll call the HART team if the situation is appropriate. If, if a student is dealing with some trauma, or a, a mental health crisis, or is in, for some reason stressed, and it's not appropriate for us to, it's not a law enforcement action. So we have called HART on a number of occasions to come to our schools and assist us. And I'm happy to say that most of the time, they have responded. So I think if there were to be an expansion of HART in our schools, then it would be just another partnership that the Durham County Sheriff's Office and our SRO program would utilize to, again, serve our student population.
I'm going to just do one more question because I know my colleagues have questions as well. This can be a, a kind of a hot topic with the SROs and the enforcement of possible metal detectors in our school. Would you want to talk about that relationship and how we can possibly continue to make our schools safer with the use of the SROs?
I hear two questions.
I could answer both.
Let's talk about school safety and how we could harden our facilities. I'll use that, that critical incident term, is hardening our facilities. One aspect of that certainly would be metal detectors. It's no secret that I have supported metal detectors before, and that's not my decision, that's a decision of you all as school board members in conjunction with the superintendent. Let me also say that the metal detector technology has evolved exponentially over the past five years to where you don't feel like you're walking through a chamber. These are very non-obtrusive looking devices that can detect metal or a weapon, or whatever the case may be, and alert the operator who's sitting behind a screen that there's something there that needs further investigation. Again, it's not to make the school feel like a prison, or feel like you're walking into the Sallyport of my detention center where we have a scanner as well. But again, to keep weapons out of our schools. And you saw from the numbers, unfortunately, we do have weapons in our schools. And you all are very familiar with a few incidents that happened earlier this past school year. So I would advocate for that, but again, it's not, not my decision. And then the other things we do is we just continue to partnership, we continue to train as a SRO program, as law enforcement, but also again, with our administrators on, if something happens, this is what we need you to do, whether it's shelter in place, secure your classroom, immediately get on the phone and call 911, and then let law enforcement clear the facility, clear the room, whatever the case may be, and address the issue that you're feeling is a threat to school safety.
I just want to thank you so very much for answering all of my questions. And there were some, some of the questions that I asked, I know those were on the minds of people out in the community. So I wanted to make sure that you had an opportunity to, to speak on that. And so thank you so very much for, for being here. And I'll continue to work with you and Dr. Lewis and the rest of this board for safety, security, and SROs. And thank you all so much for what you do, really appreciate it.
Thank you, and we, we certainly appreciate your support even before becoming a school board member. And I have to say, I'm relieved that you gave me good questions and didn't ask me to sing in your background in the arts, so thank you.
Ms. Tab.
Good evening, and thank you so much for your presentation. I'm glad that we are finally having this presentation, and I hope for our continued collaboration in, you know, all these, in all the ways. Thank you for the data, I'm really glad to know we are doing so many referrals and that we are leading the state in that, that's really encouraging. And also, I just wanted to say I appreciate your stance on decriminalizing as well. And looking for those resources and other, other ways to redirect a lot of the behavior that, you know, that you all deal with. So also, I think a few years ago, I got into reading about SRO programs and how they're developed and everything. And I think our program is maybe not, you know, unique compared to other programs, but also different from some in that the SROs who become a part of this program are, I think generally passionate about working with youth. And it's my understanding that in some places, people are more assigned to the, you know, to the role. And so that's, there's a difference there. But I know we have a lot of longstanding SROs in our community, and that's great. I have two questions. One, a general concern I have is the number of students who get suspended for substance use issues. And so I wanted to ask, are there other resources that you all utilize besides the DIAC program? When you see, when that is the, the issue, substance use or, or possession? Do you find that, or is that an area where you feel like we need more resources in the community for youth specifically, when we come across those issues?
If I understand your question, do we need more resources for students, young people who are battling an addiction in the community as well as in school?
Yeah, battling, maybe an addiction or, yeah, some kind of substance use problem. It may not have been identified as that yet, but who may come into contact with you all because of they have, they're, they are intoxicated while at school or they're in possession of, of an illegal substance.
Yeah, absolutely. Any resource that we could have available to us, we would, we would certainly appreciate. But again, all of our calls that involve drugs or alcohol were referred to DIAC. And as far as school suspension, that's completely out, out of, out of my wheelhouse. And we don't even discuss school discipline. So I think DIAC and our guidance counselors and our community resources are doing an excellent job with these young people when they identify that they have a substance abuse issue or something to that effect. And, and I don't know of any other resource that we, we could utilize right now. But whatever, whatever's out there, I also work closely with Dr. Boone and her program, the TRI program. And so she and I are collaborating. And so she and I are collaborating on a regular basis with reaching our youth in the community. And so perhaps that's a resource that we could expand in our schools as, as we look at substance abuse, ACEs, all of that that our kids are dealing with day in and day out, absolutely.
That's great. I think that's an area where probably, and you know, yeah, we could have community expansion. But I'm, I'm glad that you all, it seems like you're continuing to develop those partnerships too. So that's, I think that will only result in more support for our young people. My other question is around the representation of Latinx SROs. Just knowing that representation matters and also bilingual, I guess, bilingual SROs. Where are we, where are we at with that?
Yeah, we're, we're hiring. We're hiring every day. And particularly those who are bilingual. I mean, that's, that's actually an incentive program that we have, we have. If you come to us and you have an advanced degree or you speak another language, you are, it's incentivized through, through the salary or pay increase. But we are out there every single day being ambassadors to invite young men and women of all ethnicities to come and join our team and certainly focusing on our immigrant population, those who have, I think we hired an entire family last year. Yeah. And so Hispanic family, I'm sorry, or Latinx family and doing a fantastic job. And one of them is an SRO and animal services and patrol. So we are recruiting. So if you know of someone, put the plug in, go to the Durham County Sheriff's Office website and apply, click join the team and become part of the great things that we're doing at the Durham County Sheriff's Office.
Great. Thank you so much.
Ms. Masamba, do you have any questions, comments, concerns that you've heard? Anything you want to share in regards to this presentation from our sheriff here?
Uh, thank you. Well, we, we appreciate you. So thank you, keeping us on our toes. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Umstead.
Thank you, Sheriff Burkhead and the deputies for being here. Really appreciate hearing about all the referrals, like it's already been said. And I think being at graduations or at their school ceremonies and watching you all interact with our students is like the testament of the relationships that you all have. So thank you for that. This is not really a question, but more of a, a wondering and a hope that we can also be thinking about what's happening outside of school and how, what can we be doing inside of school to make sure when students are outside of school, they're not interacting with you in a negative way? And so I would welcome some of that conversation from you all. There are things that the school system could also be doing to make sure kids are staying engaged with the right thing. Because I know that's a concern in our community also about what happens after hours on the weekends during the summertime right now with some of our students. So welcome that dialogue with you all.
Absolutely. And I'll, I'll just note briefly, as, as Deputy Moore mentioned, students in, in the neighborhood or outside of school call him and others as well. Some of our SROs coach sporting teams, whether it's softball, football or basketball. But we do know that after hours, our kids still have contact with our SROs. They may be dealing with a situation at home or just, or in the neighborhood, and they will not hesitate to call one of our SROs.
Dr. Lewis, you look like you have something to say.
Yeah, I think, first of all, thank you all so much for, for being here tonight, but also what, what you do. But to Board Member Umstead's point, and this is one of the things that's a huge benefit of SROs and the relationships that they build with students. And I encourage students to name drop if they find themselves in an uncomfortable situation with an officer that may not know them, but they can either call one of our SROs or say, hey, I know Demo, you know, or, sorry. Yeah, I know, I know Demo, you know? So that could sometimes deescalate a situation, you know, with someone that has no clue of who this, this student is. And so that, that's one point. The second point is, and Sheriff and I had this conversation, he's familiar with the organization and really want to, you know, possibly bring that, that to Durham. And that's the, gosh, I just thought, lost the name of it. The program where if something happens outside the school in one of our, our homes, handle with care, the handle with care program. And so if an officer, whether it's city or county officer, deputy, has to be called to one of our homes where our students are for, for whatever reason, then that, through that partnership, they will contact the SRO and the SRO would notify the school principal that this student may have been engaged in whatever. And we don't share that, right? We don't, you know, that's not our concern, but just handle Anthony Lewis with care because he may have not gotten sleep last night because he was dealing with said issue. And so I think that's hugely important in terms of just making sure that as a community that we are doing all weekend to just wrap our arms around our students.
Absolutely.
Ms. Harold Goff, Ms. Byer.
I don't have much to, to say. I'm, I'm just listening and, and reflecting on everything. But wanted to lift up how, when I'm listening to you all, you sound like mentors in the buildings. And I'm wondering, with the responsibility of the SRO outside of that and our emphasis as a district on restorative practices and restorative justice and things like this, how can, can you also name, like specifically, is it, is it a strategic intention for the SRO program to be reflecting, bridging? I heard, I hear bridging the gaps between the school, you know, between youth and, and law enforcement and things like this. Is it a strategic intention to, to, to be those kind of mentors in the building? Like, what are other ways that the SRO program innovatively is looking to like really integrate into the school community? Like, do you have any very intentional ways? For example, I think, I don't remember who I was talking about. We were talking, somebody was talking about, wouldn't it be so cool if all the cars didn't look the same? Like if the SRO that was in the building actually reflected the school at the games? Or if there was something just slightly different about the uniform? Or are there any other strategic, strategic things that you're doing to bridge the, to, to? To, what's the word? Bridging, just being intentional things that relieve the intimidation of the presence of law enforcement? I think that's, that's what I'm referring to.
The producer's in my ear.
Uh, one thing, we do have student staff basketball games. Another thing, just listening to what you were saying, I think we had mentioned one time before about making the SRO specific to that school, designing a magnet, because every school has a mascot. You know, a magnet that would stick on the side of the SRO's car. So when they're at the school or at games, it's like, fine, this is my SRO. This is Hillside or this is Riverside, whomever school is. So that would identify that car with that SRO and that school. So when visitors come and say, oh, wow, this is cool. Y'all got a SRO car. So those are things that we're thinking about doing.
I would, I would take that a, a step further. You know, there are some grants out there. I had experience with this in a previous district where they actually took one of their, you know, not so brand new cars, but wrapped the entire car with the, the school's logo. And it really, to your point, it, it really helped bridge that gap also because it looks like the school, right? Like it was a true part of the school.
You know, we, we are certainly open to blending in as much as possible with our schools or with the schools that these young men and also the young women are assigned to. So whether it's a, a logo magnet or a wrap that Dr. Lewis just offered to help us find money for, we certainly will, we, we certainly would entertain that. But, but everything we do is intentional. Again, these, these young men behind me, and I'll just say young men, really work at developing those relationships in and outside the school. And we, we've sort of toned down our uniform presence. We've even talked about going with T-shirts that represent school colors. And I'm not quite there yet, but it's certainly something that we think about on, on a regular so we can be creative and again, just make our, our SROs as approachable as possible. But all, all of it really comes down to their personality and their passion, their passion for our kids.
Ms. Byer.
Sheriff Burkhead, I want to thank you for being here with us. I want to thank you for bringing your heart and your officers in, to our schools and into our meeting. And I know it's a scary place sometimes because Durham expects everything to be just and restorative and even dreams of a world where we don't need SROs in schools. And so I know you get criticism and you get praise at different places in the community where you go. And I know this is very complicated, challenging work for you all day to day as you see children that are often not at their best. But I would just like to open some space for each of you to dream like, kind of like similar to Ms. Harold Goff, y'all's uniforms are intimidating, your belts are intimidating, all the stuff on there that I hope you never have to use in the community or in a school is intimidating. And I'm speak from a place of enormous privilege. So can y'all get to the point where, where you would dream and consider along with us, you know, more plain clothes kind of situations? Just ways that y'all approach that are, that are less threatening and scary to children? Because we're talking children. Have y'all had conversations about that? Ideas that are out, best practices nationally that you're thinking about that we could, besides the cars, because, you know, that's great, or not? I don't like the ghost car myself when I see it, but you know, that's y'all's toy. What, are there things that you're dreaming that you could do differently that, that, that make you look more like a coach, a teacher, a something rather than scary to children? That's, maybe that's, that's where my heart is in this conversation, to open space for that.
Yeah, no, thank you for your comment. I think we've gone a long way to de-militarize our, our SROs. But at the end of the day, they are law enforcement. And so those tools that are on their belt are necessary, coming and going from the school as well as in the school. But we're always open to, to new ideas. But we, again, at the end of the day, we're still law enforcement. And so I too dream of an opportunity where we don't need as many guns in this country. But as we witness day in and day out, we're not there. We are far ahead of the, the national curve in Durham, but as a nation, we're not there. And so when we achieve that utopian society, I'll be the first to champion it. But until then, we're going to continue to, to strip away as much as we possibly can to reach our kids, to service our kids, to service our communities, while at the same time representing law enforcement and order in the community and servants in our schools. That's where I want to see us go. And it's not necessarily about the color we wear or what's on our belt, but it's what's in our heart.
So plain clothes is a choice that officers have, SROs have now?
No.
No.
No. No, you, you're looking at the way they're outfitted.
I am.
By my mandate.
Some of it's, it's warmer to me than others. I'm just saying, and maybe I'm, maybe I'm alone in that. A polo shirt. Yep. Okay.
Sometimes wear nice black, all black tennis shoes or black ones. Or some all black Air Forces or some Air Maxes, all black Air Maxes. The kids love it. They know I got style. Y'all got great personalities.
We do too.
I appreciate it. Y'all are, some of y'all are making great comments off mic, but I appreciated the, the wearing, the sneakers and kicks that the kids like, making those conversations that way. And you have great personalities, great hearts. I, I want to make sure that, that that got heard since some of y'all were not on mic.
Thank you.
I, I look forward, I'd like, I appreciate you saying that you are calling in heart when needed. And, and I appreciate you calling in and being explicit with Mr. Tab and, and us that you are not disciplining students and you are only dealing with North Carolina general statute information. I would hope that in the future, we could codify some of the language in our MOU that came from the Community Safety Wellness Task Force. I think y'all are doing some of those things already. And we can always strengthen that language, and I think that goes a long way. And I appreciate your willingness to consider that for, for future MOUs and the partnership that we have. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Ms. Cardad.
I'll be brief. Thank you for coming tonight. It's been a long time coming. You've answered so many questions tonight that I've had for the last couple of years. So thank you so much for being here and for all of you for being here this evening. I'm so glad also to hear that you all are focused on relationship building and mentorship, that there's this training. I had no idea that there's all this training that you have to do related to juvenile mental health, supporting students with exceptional needs and de-escalation. That all feels really positive to me. And I love that you're building a positive presence in the schools and one of mentorship. And, and also that DPS goes above and above, I'm sorry, you all in DPS go above and beyond what the state requires too. So thank you for all of that and for all of the work that you do. And I think my one question is if students have a, it sounds like most interactions are, you try to make them positive with students, but if they happen to have a negative interaction with, with an SRO or repeated negative interaction where they feel like they're being targeted, for example, I don't think this happens often, but if this were to happen, what is, what should that student do? Or where, who are they supposed to talk to? Like what is, how, how are complaints submitted and, and handled in the system?
Yeah, well, we certainly have, we have a process for it internally. And we also have a process where we've, we've carved out within the school system, working with the principals, working with the AP and working with the guidance counselor if a student experiences a negative reaction. And all of those are investigated, not only by the school, but our internal affairs will look into the complaint as well. And we investigate every complaint. I am happy to say that those negative interactions have been few. And so we haven't had to sort of pull out the pen to put those complaints in order or discipline on a, on an officer. Yeah. So we have those, we have those conversations as well. Again, the relationship we have with our principals and our, and our assistant principals and our teachers is what allows us to be so great. And, and to avoid those negative interactions because, again, they see us as part of DPS. Even though we're law enforcement, we wear polo shirts. They see us as part of the day to day at their schools because they know that we are there for them.
Thanks so much.
Ms. Umstead.
I have one more. I do have a question this time, and it is tricky. But I appreciate you Sheriff Burkhead for some of the advocacy you've done around ICE and engagement with ICE from the sheriff's office. We know that our families and many of us in our community, it's a fearful time right now. And so I'm wondering if there's anything you can highlight around what families can expect from SROs when it comes to worries about ICE, if that makes sense.
Well, again, that's a conversation we've already had with Dr. Lewis and Director Howard, Eva Howard, on school safety and what to do if an ICE agent shows up. And there are very specific rules, some do's and don'ts. And again, we've flushed that out with Dr. Lewis already. You all know where I stand with ICE. I've been, I think I've been the poster child for opposition with ICE, which I, I work proudly because that's not something our officers should be engaging in. And we'll continue to stand firm on that. And I applaud Governor Stein for exercising his veto a week ago. And hopefully we can, we can sustain that. But I think the policies and the conversations that Dr. Lewis and I and others have had around what to do if an ICE agent shows up, there are protocols. And I, I won't go into those tonight, but just rest assured that if that call comes, we all know how to respond to protect our schools and our students first and foremost. And again, there, there are protocols that the federal ICE agents have to follow as well. So we, we've had those conversations as well.
So I just want to reiterate what you said, that there are protocols and procedures in place so that you all be protecting our students and our families. I just, I'm reiterating because I know that the community and there's fear out there. We got a couple of schools starting in a couple of weeks, right? And so how do we just, I want families to hear, inside of our school, we're protecting our students and families as much as we can do. So any more comments?
Yeah, absolutely. And we also had this conversation in the community. This is not just a conversation. This is not just a conversation we have inside our school buildings. We're in the community. I'm in the community. Grace Marsh, who's here with me tonight, Tamika Gilmer, and former pastor cousins, we're all in the community, talking about these situations that we're dealing with, with ICE. As I mentioned a moment ago, this national climate is impacting all of us, and so we're here in North Carolina, and certainly in Durham County, are going to remain on the front line to make sure that the community knows who to call, how to get in touch with us. I have several programs with El Centro on a regular basis, talking about Know Your Rights, the U.VISA program, understanding what to do if ICE comes into the community as well. So, I think the message is out there, but certainly appreciate you reiterating it here tonight, and how we translate those protections to our students in our schools. And so we're front and center on that. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Tab, you have one quick question.
Thank you, thank you very much. Again, thank you so much. I do know that the first time a lot of our deep Durham Public Schools students interact with the SROs when they get to middle school, what are we, is there anything for Dr. Lewis and Sheriff Burkhead in planning for some interaction with programming for the elementary schools so that when they get to middle school, they don't see, they're not interacting with an SRO for the very first time? Because we just have their programs and all those programs that I remember, and they were very, very effective. So, just want to see where we are with that building so that the kids don't just see, be scared of the SROs when they get to middle school.
Yeah, that's certainly something I would like to see, and I'll defer to Dr. Lewis. We have had conversations about various programs and models that are out there, but it's always going to come down to what's best for Durham and what fits in DPS, and how we can incorporate whatever program at whatever level, be it elementary up. And so we've had those conversations, and we'll continue to explore those opportunities because you're right, I want to get to our kids as young as possible. I want to get, and what I don't want to happen is, you know, the mother or the father in the grocery store, and I'm in uniform, sometimes I do wear a uniform, and they say, "That man right there is coming to get you." And I'm like, "No, no, no, timeout. That's not what we're about." And so we built a culture around being approachable to our young, our young kids. I speak at rites of passage on a regular basis, again, dealing with young men and women who are in that program. And so I think we will continue to have those conversations, and Dr. Lewis knows that I will avail myself.
Yeah, and Sheriff and I have actually had some conversations about pairing the SROs that are serving middle and high schools up with the elementary schools that are in that zone, just as, you know, if I'm on my way to, you know, said, middle school, or just sometime during the day, I can stop by that elementary school just to, so the students know, begin to know their faces, you know, stop by, play kickball, go to recess with them, so they know when I get to middle school, I know this person in this uniform. I know DMO. I know whoever the SRO is. Sorry, DMO. But what I also think that creates is, if there is an opportunity where there is a safety issue around one of our elementary schools, our elementary principals know who to, you know, to contact. Obviously, they'll call 911 if it's emergency, but if there's an issue where they just need some assistance, that's that partnership with that SRO.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, for giving me the opportunity. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you all so much for being here, your continued support of Durham Public Schools. I've thoroughly appreciated the conversation that you have had with us, the conversations that we've had to get here. I appreciate that. I feel bad for sort of putting you on the spot with my question.
Oh, no.
But I'm going to do so. As a single parent to a male student, a black man, I want to know, is there any intentionality around the work that SROs are doing in schools to ensure our students are learning how to interact with law enforcement? I go to, hmm, my family buys season tickets to the NCCU football games, and I think constantly about what happens at the end of the game when they say, "Get home and arrive home safely," right? And I want every student to know that when they have an interaction with law enforcement, that they're going to be able to get home safely. So, is there any intentionality around programming with our students around what happens if you do interact, both in the school setting and outside of the school setting, with law enforcement? And how to engage in a way that will allow them to emerge from that opportunity, even with a ticket or charges, but alive?
Yeah, absolutely. Let me just frame our answer, because a couple of folks behind me want to answer that. Our goal is for everyone to go home safe. That's our number one goal. And so we are very intentional about safety and de-escalation and trying to understand what got the individual to this point. And I'm going to speak the obvious, as a black man who's been in law enforcement for a very long time, I've seen those interactions go left or go right. And so I have always been intentional about treating everyone fair and consistently, but certainly my black brothers, who, we know the decks stacked against them. And so I know my SROs, these as well as others, are very intentional. Deputy Moore can certainly speak to his interactions as well as others in the community when we have to have a law enforcement interaction outside of schools.
One of my biggest things that I really support is teaching in the classroom. Whenever we get a chance, we love to go in the classroom and educate the kids. I love to tell the teachers at Shepherd Middle School, "When you have to go to the bathroom, call me, because I'll take over the classroom." And what I mean by that, that's an opportunity for me to educate the kids about how to become a better citizen, just not only in the school but on the outside, what to do. Give them my experience, what's happened to me as a black African-American. And I'll let them, I give them the stories of how I was placed on the wall unjustly, the wrong guy. I give them my stories and what to do and how I reacted. So, whenever I get a chance at the school, I educate, and I have a great relationship with the teachers, and they allow me to take over the classroom, "A, you go to the break room, you work on your grades. Let me go in your classroom, and let me educate the kids," and they love it. Show them some videos, interact with them. It's hard for me to leave those classrooms because they ask me a million questions, and I have to let them know, "I have to go, guys, but if you have any questions when you see me in the cafeteria, I answer them." Thank you.
Back off of Deputy Moore. All our SROs are required to do at least two presentations a month. That's what he's describing to you, a classroom presentation, where they go in the classroom, interact with the kids. It could be open discussion, or he or she will have a topic. But I guarantee you that our officers are interacting with our young, black, and brown boys and girls in a positive way. They do talk to them, tell them about what they do, or what to do when you have interaction with law enforcement. Why? Because they come and ask the SRO, because they feel that comfortable with them. "Hey, I got stopped last weekend over my neighborhood. What should I have done?" And they will tell them the right way to handle it and the wrong way they wish they shouldn't handle it. And they trust these SROs to the point they will come and talk to them if they're having a problem in their neighborhood with, if they feel they're being unjustly stopped or targeted. So, they do come and talk to the SROs.
Again, we partner with some of our resources out in the community and some of our organizations who are having these conversations about not just Know Your Rights, but what to do if you are stopped by law enforcement. And I participated in skits where, you know, we simulate or we act out that the person's driving a car and it being stopped by law enforcement, what to do, and follow commands, and keep your hands where we can see, and things like that. And the audience participation is great because sometimes they just don't know, and they can see themselves being in that situation before. And so we try to bring it home, like, here's what we want you to do, and we always end it with, "We all want to go home safe." At the end of the day, that's what we're there for. If we have to write a citation, we write the citation. Sometimes we write warnings, but at the end of the day, we want everyone to be safe and go home safe.
Thank you so much. Colleagues, the MOU is before us for action tonight.
I move approval of the MOU.
Second.
Been moved by Ms. Harold Goff, seconded by Ms. Byer, to move approval of the MOU between the Board of Education, Durham County Sheriff's Office. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, use the same sign. Thank you. It passes six oh. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Ms. Smith, do you have a copy of the MOU for the sheriff to sign while he's here?
Thank you. Don't go anywhere, Sheriff Burkhead, but not great.
Colleagues, the next item on our agenda was brought to us by Ms. Umstead. Ms. Umstead, did you want to introduce us?
Sure. As many of you all might know, there is a bill that is, I think it's in the, I think the House has passed it, actually, Senate Bill 277 about eliminating DEI in public education. There are several bills about eliminating DEI in state agencies and higher education. Higher education has already had some steps moved in this direction, and it does mean things like principal prep programs are struggling with how they talk about diversity, equity, inclusion, and those are people who are teaching our students. And so I'm very concerned about this bill coming for public education. Equity is a core foundational work of the work that we do in Durham Public Schools. We know that our students need to be met where they are. We know that they are all diverse, and we want to celebrate who they are and what they do, what they bring to our classrooms, and we want to make sure they feel included in all the things that are going on in their school. And that's not only for our students, but it's also for the adults and for the teachers and educators that work within our buildings as well. So, I put together this resolution pretty quickly this afternoon. I'm open to any edits and revisions, but hope that you all would consider passing this this evening, and we sending it along to the powers that be.
Did you want to read it and then discuss, or do you want, how do y'all want to handle this tonight?
I would love to read it. Ms. Harold Goff has a quick edit for Ms. Umstead.
Okay.
It's, it just, the title says 277, but it's Bill 227.
Oh, excuse me, thank you.
Bill 227, yeah.
Okay, we'll give that modified. Ms. Umstead, you want to start us off with reading it?
Ash.
Yeah, I think, can we read it aloud and then discuss?
Yeah, of course. Yeah.
The same way we're rotating each person each paragraph.
227. All right. Resolution against Senate Bill 227, eliminating DEI in public education. Whereas Durham Public Schools' mission is to embrace, educate, and empower every student to innovate, serve, and lead, and...
Whereas DPS student demographics include students of color, students who qualify for exceptional children services, students who are multilingual learners, students who are LGBTQIA+, and...
Whereas one of DPS's core beliefs is a commitment to equity, to ensure our students and schools have the necessary access to the resources, supports, and opportunities needed to succeed, and...
Whereas Senate Bill 227 titled, "Eliminating DEI in Public Education," seeks to prohibit the ability of school districts to teach of divisive concepts from being taught in the classroom or through professional learning, which could tamper our efforts in working towards equity, and...
Whereas the bill calls these concepts divisive, the Board of Education recognizes the importance of celebrating our diversity, honoring the needs of every person, creating spaces where every person will be included, and teaching accurate history to adequately address the unique needs of our students, families, and educators, and...
Whereas this bill threatens to challenge our belief that the duty of public education is to educate every single child by ensuring each child has the resources, opportunities, and environment to succeed, and...
Therefore, be it resolved that the Durham Public Schools Board of Education urges the governor of North Carolina to veto Senate Bill 227, and...
I apologize. As it be it further resolved that Durham Public Schools Board of Education urges members of the North Carolina General Assembly to focus on developing a robust public education budget with an equity toolkit that fully supports students in North Carolina. And signed this day, which would be 26, 2025, June 26, 2025.
Colleagues, I'd invite any conversation as well as a motion.
I move approval of the resolution against eliminating DEI in public schools, Senate Bill 227.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Harold Goff, seconded by Ms. Chavez, to approve the resolution against Senate Bill 227, eliminating DEI in public education, with the edits of 227 all the way through. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Ms. Carter-.
Do you have some discussion? Not very, not much, but because this is great, thank you so much for drafting this. For member Umstead, I just was wondering if in the, because I, I was wondering if in the second clause, if instead of saying student demographics include students of color, if we could just say DPS welcomes and includes students of color, students who qualify for... And then I was also kind of wondering, are those, are we being completely inclusive in that list there, or is there anything else anybody wants to add? Is that comprehensive? Like, I'm thinking students who might be immigrants. Just throwing some things out there, not that we need to discuss this for a long time, and the, yeah, that's it. But otherwise, I think this looks great, and given that, I think it is important to put this out this evening. I support it.
I appreciate those edits, and I hear Ms. Umstead typing over here, so I think she's capturing that. Am I, is that right? Yeah? I hear typing.
Okay. Colleagues, consensus around the edits, yes? Okay. All right. Thank you, Ms. Carter-. for those edits. Thank you, Ms. Umstead, for getting this together so quickly. Thank you so much for being here. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, use the same sign. It passes unanimously. Thank you again, Ms. Umstead. Okay, the next item on our agenda tonight is from Academic Services, the DPS Code of Character Conduct and Support. Dr. King?
Good evening, board members. As our colleagues come forward, just to introduce this item quickly, this item is presented for the board's information and reflects the culmination of several months of collaborative work by a diverse group of stakeholders across the district under the leadership of Dr. Laverne Maddox Perry, Senior Executive Director for Student Support Services, and Dr. Melissa Watson, our Director of Student Alternatives and Support. This effort has brought together voices from school-based staff, district administrators, student services, to thoughtfully explore how restorative practice can meaningfully be embedded into Durham Public Schools disciplinary policies. Tonight's presentation provides an overview of the proposed direction which we seek to move, which seeks to reduce exclusionary discipline, promote accountability, strengthen school communities, and ensure equitable outcomes for all students. At the conclusion of this presentation, the administration will welcome the board's feedback to help inform and guide the next phase of planning. I know there was some question from board members earlier today about whether this work would replace our student code of conduct, but really what this work is all about is how we, as we've talked about throughout this year, how we embed restorative practices in our student code of conduct and in our work around discipline, such that it reflects this board's commitment to restorative practices in our schools. And so I'd like to thank Dr. Maddox Perry and her team for the work that they've done so far. Board members, we're glad to share with you the progress that we've made, and I look forward to hearing from you in terms of what you would like to see us do as we continue to move this work forward.
Thank you, Dr. King. Good evening, Dr. Lewis.
Thank you, Dr. King. Good evening, Dr. Lewis, it's about DPS School Board members, Chair Rogers, and of course, the Durham community. I am Laverne Maddox Perry, Senior Executive Director for Student Support Services, and I am here with Dr. Melissa Watson, Director of Student Alternatives and Supports. Together, we're going to share the presentation as an update regarding the development of a student code of conduct, character, and support, as well as proposed revisions to Policy forty three oh one. Dr. Watson has been integral as the lead for goal team two B, as well as being the primary co-lead on this project with me. You will hear a bit about the processes, timeline, as well as the people involved in these proposed revisions, but you won't actually get to hear the proposal for action tonight. We recognize that if we shared opportunities to collaborate around this work, we've gained more insights and believe we are in a place to further engage our community and board in the final stages of development towards future implementation. Next slide, please. This slide underscores why we are before you this evening. In May twenty twenty four, during the strategic plan priority two update, we recommended that we should look at revision to Policy forty three oh one and creation of a student code of conduct, character, and support as another step in our full implementation of restorative practices within our district, and primarily as a leverage point for reducing out-of-school exclusions for our students, particularly the student groups named in strategic plan goal two B regarding reductions and suspensions. Our strategic plan goal teams felt it was important to provide more restorative approaches for school leaders as they are responding to undesirable behaviors or violations of the code of conduct. Here, the basic hypothesis of restorative practices is that people are happier, more cooperative and productive, and more likely to make positive changes in their behavior when those in authority do things with them rather than to them or for them. That belief prevalent in our restorative practices trainings over the past few years is why we have undertaken this effort to be true to this belief in all our practices, including our responses to undesirable behaviors. Next slide, please. Here, we acknowledge all the key players who've been members of the project team and have provided input, leadership, and feedback through multiple medium to get us to the point where we feel comfortable presenting this update for your review. As you can see, it is a diverse group of DPS educators, and we're proud that no one person can take credit for creating this proposal alone. It truly has been a product of collaboration. Okay, next slide, please. As we begin the presentation, I wanted to highlight some terminology that is often used interchangeably, but I'd want to provide distinct definitions for our use as Durham Public Schools. Restorative justice is a philosophy and a set of practices that shift the focus from punishment to healing and repairing harm. It is about a restorative response when there has been harm. This method is often practiced in the realm of criminal justice to prevent recidivism and hold perpetrators accountable for their actions while helping them to gain an understanding of the impact of those actions on others. It is a reactive approach. Restorative practice is akin to restorative justice in that there is an emphasis on accountability when harm occurs. However, you can broaden restorative practices as more of a proactive approach that focuses on building healthy relationships in the beginning and embedding an intentional, inclusive, and respectful way of thinking about, talking about, and responding to behavioral issues. In our implementation of restorative practices, we hope that we are operating restoratively with eighty percent proactive activities along the continuum, and of course, there is room for the twenty percent reactive or responsive activities after there is evidence of harm against a member of the community or the entire community itself. This update on our proposed revisions is our attempt to enhance Policy forty three oh one by adding more of the restorative methods and language prior to an occurrence and after there is a need to repair harm or restore a relationship due to a violation of the code of character, conduct, and support. Next slide, please. Now I'm going to ask Dr. Watson to take the lead in giving a brief description of the steps that we've taken thus far during the twenty twenty four, twenty five school term to get us to the point that we have recommendations for you. Dr. Watson?
It gives me great pleasure to be with you this evening to celebrate the collaborative work of my colleagues. The purpose of the revised, the revisions that we are speaking to comes both with timeliness and intentionality. As a district, we have listened to the calls from our school communities to establish a more supportive, human-centered response to scholar behavior. The supplement of our code of conduct shifts us away from punitive practices towards restorative responses that encourage student accountability, reflection, and growth. It aligns with the values outlined in our strategic plan by prioritizing equity and honors collective responsibility that we share to create safe and supportive school environments where every scholar feels seen, heard, and valued. Next slide, please. Next slide. Our development process follow a deliberate five-phase model. Research and policy analysis, drafting by topic area, stakeholder engagement, iterative refinement, and final compilation. This approach ensures transparency and inclusion at every stage. Rather than implementing a top-down process, we engage the community's voice throughout the process. This allowed us to address real concerns from our schools, our students, and our families, and to make data-informed decisions about the structure and the content of the supplement. Next slide, please. Each section of the supplement was led by a content area expert across departments, ensuring both depth of knowledge and alignment with our restorative framework. These leads facilitated collaborative discussions, reviewed stakeholder feedback, and carefully refined language to reflect both clarity and coherence. Our shared leadership model helped us maintain consistency, equity, and coherence across a large, complex document. Next slide, please. We did not merely present this code of character, conduct, and support for review. We invited active participation in its creation through surveys, world cafe, community dialogue, and multi, multilingual feedback. The result is a more responsive, inclusive code that reflects the lived experiences of our school communities. Next slide, please. The draft we shared with you includes robust supplemental materials to support implementation. These include restorative tools, mental health supports, and character development resources. These tools empower school leaders and staff to implement the code of character, conduct, and support with flexibility and fidelity, adapting strategies to meet the needs of individual scholars and classrooms while remaining rooted in shared district values. I will, like, I would invite Dr. Maddox Perry to talk about critical elements of that and to talk about our implementation plan.
Next slide, please. Next slide. Okay, so this slide illustrates the ways in which restorative practices is embedded in the school improvement planning process. We are trying to, as Dr. Watson said, make sure that there is coherence in all of our efforts to increase our students' performance and achievement, and that includes looking at various areas by which we can integrate restorative practices across our district. That includes academic success, discipline in the area that we're talking about with forty three oh one, equity, addressing those disparities that are outlined in Strategic Plan Goal two B, and of course, aligning with MTSS framework, our total framework for school improvement. So we really wanted to make sure that we highlighted that restorative practices is not a separate initiative. If you were to see some of the documents that we share, and we're happy to share those again in our MTSS framework trainings, as well as other workshops and work with our school leaders and teachers, you will see that everything has restorative practices highlighted and represented as the foundation for everything else that we do and building upon that. Okay, next slide, please. And here you just see restorative practices and MTSS as a crosswalk. As you know, tier one, MTSS is a multi-tiered system of supports, and it's all about making sure that we have a response, we, we set up a response when students demonstrate that there is a need for more intensive or even supplemental supports, but also that we have a strong core that addresses the needs and supports our students. Universal supports are tier one, and you can see we've named a couple that are restorative in nature, including our SEL learning, and it's integrated into instruction, it's integrated into our school schedules. We also have tier two, which is more targeted supports around restorative conversations. There might be check-ins with students emerging with behavioral needs, a bit more need for attention. And then, of course, there is collaborative problem-solving and PLC work around solution finding, working with families as well. Tier three, of course, is our intensive supports, and that is when you get into a little bit further down the restorative continuum. You have formal restorative conferences following serious incidents. There may be a need for community assistance in that, as well as wraparound supports that could be developed for students and staff, actually, through coordination with some of our partners in the mental health field and other areas of support. Next slide, please. So, school leaders and support for teachers, this is how we hope that this code provides us with the opportunity to be able to work with our school leaders, our staff, and provide them with flexibility when it comes to embodying restorative practices when there is a need to address behaviors. And you can see here that we hope that we are asking our school leaders and our, our teachers to model what we hope to see, which is to be more restorative in their language. That's one aspect we took into consideration when building the draft. Recognizing and celebrating restorative responses that promote student accountability. Student accountability is one of the areas in which we try to really embed that into some of the matrices. And then, of course, continuing to lead data-informed discussions about, you know, culture, climate, utilizing discipline trends, all those things through a restorative lens. Next slide, please. Okay, next steps. So our next steps, of course, beginning now, we will be working directly during the remaining of the summer and throughout the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year to move forward with an even more in-depth training plan for implementation, more of a communication plan. We are continuing to work with some school leaders around some intricacies in the actual proposal that you will receive. And we, our hope is to ensure that those invested in the success of Durham Public Schools students are clear about what is in the revised policy. I have been using the terminology that we would like to have a, a, a long runway for this to make sure that once we have your approval and we've gotten the code of conduct and revisions to the policy where they are representative of our beliefs and what we believe is going to help us in our strategic plan, goal attainment, that we are able to ensure everyone is clear about what it stands for, as well as how the supports and, and the support from our, our schools leaders and our departments can assist with that. You also see that we are going to continue with district-wide training, and a big point that we will be doing next, next year is really some protocol refinement. We have, as, as a district started looking at all our standard operating procedures, and that will include a lot of the work that goes into how we support schools as they deal with issues that arise when it comes to discipline. So we hope and plan to utilize the revised code and the supplements as a leading talking point in refining those protocols and looking at data as we begin to share more and more, are we able to see any trends? Anything that helps us to refine what we want to present to you for final approval? And then, of course, we would like in June and through August of twenty twenty six to be back to work with our teams for full implementation for the start of the twenty six, twenty seven school year. Okay, next slide, please. Excuse me, this is not an exhaustive list of how we view the supports that are going to be needed for implementation, but it's just a summary, and I hope it exemplifies the breadth and depth of the cooperation that's going to be needed as we move forward, so that we can have successful implementation. Next slide, please. Okay, the restorative journey. This is a, a journey, like many other that, others that we undertake in education. It is not a destination. And this quote really is something that has grown out of the work globally of restorative practitioners, and it says, "Restorative practices are not a program to complete, but a way of being to grow into one conversation, one relationship, one repair at a time." And, next slide, please. Okay, that concludes our update, and I will turn it back over to Dr. King.
Board members, we're glad to answer any questions you might have at this point.
Colleagues, any question? Comment? Ms. Harold Goff, thank you.
Thank you. I, I personally am very proud of the work that Durham Public Schools is doing with restorative justice and restorative practices in our schools. I think that our community is looking at how restorative practices are built into the culture of Durham Public Schools, and this feels like a very positive thing to be making sure that it's reflected in our code of conduct. So very excited for that. I would like for you to speak a little bit. I, I also love how the community engagement, how that is such a, an integral part of this process for, not just for building the trust of the community and, and how we are implementing restorative practices into the culture of our schools, but also in how that will educate our community about how this is all being rolled out in an equitable way, in a way that doesn't, you know, restorative practice is all about repairing harm in a way that doesn't cause any harm. That's, just thought about that. I'd like for you to speak a little bit about some of the challenges of help us to understand why you're not just going to say, we're going to implement this right now. Like, why, why, why are you taking the time? How do we? Tell us more about the conversation about how this is going to look so that it works across the whole district and not just in individual buildings, that conversation.
Yes, absolutely. So we have begun some initial, you know, we, we did two. So, we have begun some initial, you know, we did two, a two-prong approach to community engagement that includes educators and families as well as students. We did some input before we even began, we did surveys and tried to obtain information that, you know, what really needs to be included, what do we need to address in our revisions, what do you want to see that is indicative of restorative practices in our district? So, we did that piece. We also offered opportunities for feedback, like oftentimes is the case, you know, there was not, what I would say, the level of engagement with the initial request for feedback because we did not have a completed draft just yet. So, we wanted to make sure that once we had gotten all the input in a workable draft, that we could share that broadly and have multiple opportunities for members of our community to provide feedback, and that is important because if you're going to have a shift in your approach, that means discipline and response to undesired behaviors is going to look very different in some schools. So, teachers are going to need to understand how indeed restorative practices is still supportive of you as an educator when there has, you know, been some harm perhaps in your class or between you and their interaction with the student, as well as other parents, really understanding what it means, what kind of conversations are going to be had with students and students themselves. We are really dedicated this year to making sure it gets to the student level. We actually have some student ambassadors that are at Hillside High School, as well as some other schools, who are going to really dedicate working with us to make sure this draft and all the language around it becomes a natural part of the student leadership conversations as well. So, we really want a long runway because we could just put it into, into policy and begin next year, but I don't think we've had an opportunity to do that refinement process, and we think that's important because we believe this is a part of the transformational change that we want to see in Durham Public Schools. So, we want to make sure it is closely aligned to a lot of the other innovative steps that we're taking, we want to take the time to do it right, and we want families and community of educators to feel confident that we're headed in the right direction.
I could just add to that, I think the nature of this work and its basis being, you know, connected particularly to discipline creates a real challenge when it comes to the way we might roll out other programs, whereas we might think about a quote-unquote pilot, right? It's very difficult to do a pilot that involves disciplinary responses or responses to inappropriate behavior, because that would put us in a situation where some schools would be responding to that inappropriate behavior in one way, and others might be responding in another way systemically, and that's, that's not something that we want to see happen. So, what we think is a much more appropriate response is to do the work that is required to bring all of our schools to a level of preparation that would allow them to implement this work, and then begin that process as a full district, as opposed to in a more, in a piecemeal fashion.
Haraldoff, does that conclude your questions?
That, that answers my question thoroughly, and another part of that is while we're in that long runway process, what does our restorative practices currently look like as we're going in that direction? What's currently taking place?
So, I think if in, I don't want to overstep, but you know, what's important to remember is that we, in this district, we have a number of portion, this work is going forward in this district. What has been missing is the nexus of the actual work that we're doing and the language in our actual discipline processes, right? And so, that's what this work is about, is bringing those two things together. So, we have lots of schools that are doing really good work as it relates to restorative practices. Some of those schools might be what, what folks might refer to as early adopters, but in other schools that certainly need to continue some work. So, our hope is that over time, as we continue to move forward, our schools that are doing the work very well will continue to do that work and be strengthened while we bring all the remaining schools up to par, so that we are in a place in a very short period of time to move the work forward. But what we think is most critical is that through this process, we are establishing a definitive statement about what our expectation is going forward as it relates to how restorative practices work is embedded and will be embedded in our disciplinary responses.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate all of this work.
Okay, I'm going to go to Ms. Byer, and then Ms. Carter Otten.
So, I want to express gratitude to you all for bringing this and bringing this as a, a next generation of where this work is going, and acknowledge all the work that you've done, the team you brought together, that's massive, the vision you have, and then just express a little bit of frustration because as a board, we thought we did this in 2016. And so, y'all that weren't here, I just want to say, we thought we got this rolling in 2016, 2017. We invested in restorative practice centers, we invested in training and in people, and it feels like, and we, and we worked on the student code of conduct, we brought, that was over 18 months worth of work, we, we thought we'd done the work. And so, it's frustrating to have, you need a runway that is this long, it is frustrating not to be able to be further along. And so, I'm, I'm, I'm watching, but I know our community is watching because the other thing we were doing during a lot of that work was putting out our student discipline data transparently, and that's what folks are asking and watching, and, and being honest when stuff wasn't working, and I think that's important for us to acknowledge, like, a lot of our dreams and things didn't come true. We, not all of our practices were restorative. And then, we, but we were able to share that, that discipline data and, and share, and I think people are asking for, how many people have we trained? I think it'll be important for us to actually say, "This school is ahead of this one." It's okay, like, if we're not already, but I, I hope that we will continue pushing this as some of the most urgent work on behalf of our students. They're going to make mistakes. We all make mistakes, and we want those mistakes to be learning opportunities for them, we want our adults to be gentle, and so I just, for those of y'all that are here and weren't here then, I thought we'd done this work already, and then Dr. King sat me right because, you know, I know this is different work, but it still is like, "Come on, Durham. If Durham's not gotten it together, does anybody have it together?" And I know it's training, retraining, rewriting, and all of that, but I sit with it with a place of, of some of the community that is frustrated that, that we aren't further ahead.
So, so I would say this, I certainly recognize that frustration and appreciate it, but, but I would try to reframe that a little bit, and I would suggest we are ahead, right? Because I, I don't mind telling you, most communities aren't even having this conversation as it relates to their disciplinary practices. What's important, I think, for, for us to remember, and I, and I appreciate the sense about what was done in 2016, obviously, even though I was not here and was not a part of it. Part of, kind of what finds us in the place that we are now is that the way that work was structured is that it was essentially left in a space where it could be voluntary, right? So, that's why we have a scenario where we have schools that are quote-unquote "early adopters," right? Because those were the schools where the administrators and staff members bought into the process and began that work. You know, until now, there has been no definitive policy directive that this is what will happen in Durham Public Schools, and that is a step in the bridge that I think we are crossing now. And, and what's important, and, and let me just share this, those board members who've been in this conversation with me before will tell you, "I'm in the same place you're in, I'm ready to go." But I do think we have to be fair in that because we set most of this work up at the beginning as voluntary, we do have to create a scenario where we give those schools that did not volunteer the time to catch up with those schools that did, right? And I think when we talk about a long runway, that's what we're talking about, is making sure that we provide those schools with the time that they need to get up to par in a way that is fair and equitable for them before we, you know, begin to hold them accountable for doing that work in this way. But I certainly share your, your concern about the fact that we continue to, to need a long runway for this work. And again, board members who've been in this conversation with me before know that I'm sure they're thinking Dr. King had to soften because I did, but, but I think that's the only fair way to do this, and frankly, the only way that I think we can do it that will, that will lead to a successful implementation, because I don't think we're going to get what we need out of this process, you know, if we set it up in a way that, that feels punitive to our schools.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and I appreciate that you also share some of the frustration and, and are going to look to own and lead this work, and this team is. And I know it can't be turned on a dime, but I think it's what our students deserve, and y'all, and I think we're in alignment on that. One thing that I think I would encourage the team to continue to do that I don't think we've done in Durham for a while is look at our alternative programs and what their strengths of them are and where they really need to be supported more, and if, if there are needs that we have that, that aren't being met, and I don't even know if we have New Directions Center, what, Second Chance, what are we, New Directions is New Directions. I don't even think we do a good job letting families know that those are out there all the time and letting the, the community know, but maybe there's areas and gaps that, that y'all can dream up as part of that as well. I'd love for y'all to look up, look and dream bigger and better for Lakeview, which is one of the most beloved schools in this, in this district, and what we could do, you know, so keep, I hope that you keep, keep my frustration as a gentle nudge of encouragement as, as how important this work is, and I know y'all know it is, but thank you.
Thanks so much, appreciate all of your work on this, this is great, very excited about where this is going. I have three questions, and the first, I'm sorry if I missed in the beginning, I had to step out, use the restroom, but I'm, are we going to be getting recommendations to modify Policy 4301 also in addition to the, that sits alongside this guidance document, right?
Yes.
Okay. And then, when should we, when will we, when should we expect to see modifications to that policy and be ready to review them?
In the fall.
Okay, thank you. And then, let's see, my next question is, I know you named some additional resources, so I am curious to know, since that's how the board can support you and making this a reality, right? Because it seems like we will, like, more fiscal resources will need to be dedicated to this to make it work, and it's my understanding, I was not here back in 2016, but I, it seems like maybe there wasn't adequate investment, and that's part of why we are where we are today. And so, I'm wondering what you can share with us about, maybe, and maybe you don't have a good sense right now, but like, what we should expect to see as far as kind of this training that needs to be done, and not just one time, but, you know, repeat training, family communication tools I saw in one of your slides earlier, anything else you could share with us about that?
Yes, one thing that I would just highlight, besides the normal business of, of course, training, onboarding new staff, making sure that we have robust professional learning for them, one thing that I did highlight that Ms. Byer did mention was looking at our alternative programs, and we are actually working on that. That is actually one of the reasons why we're just taking a really intentional look at what New Directions and Lakeview both look like, and a part of 4301, I just want to be clear, what we really want to do is embed language because the work that was done in 2016 is a wonderful start, but it was different work, and it began in a different way. For some, I was not here in 2016 either, but it was wonderful work, and it was actually, you know, kind of ahead of the pack in doing that work in that, at that time. But since then, of course, you know, as you learn more, you try to do things to be really as effective as you can, one thing that, that happened was, you know, of course, we have restorative practice coordinators, and when we have that, a person with whom people may or may not, you know, attach a, a, something as important as this journey with restorative practices, it really takes a lot of time to make sure that that collective responsibility and accountability is built in a community. And so, that has been a big part of our work. But in terms of the fiscal resources, we are probably, we think that we're going to need some different supports for Lakeview as well as New Directions, that has to do with programming. We're looking to be able to offer even more robust programming for students who do receive some of the most serious responses to undesirable behaviors, to make sure that the reentry is positive and that we set students up for success.
And it does seem like there'll be additional resources needed, right, for making sure that everybody in all the schools are trained to be, that we can implement well? And then, my last question is the one that's most important to me, which is, how will you and we know that this is being implemented the way that it's intended, and how will we know that it's achieving the desired outcomes? Are there going to be some established interim goals, implementation goals, and outcome goals with metrics that we'll get reports on periodically so we can, y'all, most importantly, so y'all can see?
Right.
Are we on track, and what do we, where do we want to get to, and are we getting there? And then, so we can just see how that's going every once in a while.
Yes. So, we will work very closely with other members of academic services around the new instructional walkthrough. There is a place for culture and climate feedback, and we really want to utilize that as a, kind of a, a way to embed some of our regular routine monitoring of implementation when we're in schools so that it's holistic. So, we will be participating in, you know, encouraging that that also, you know, has that aspect of monitoring for restorative practices implementation. We also have new restorative practices, documents that we will use, assessments as well as self-assessments that we are going to monitor and utilize throughout the course of the year that have been developed, of course, from research and analysis, but also in collaboration with our restorative practices district team, that is a multidisciplinary team, to make sure, we've had a few schools to utilize both those this year, this past school year, and next year, we will have all our schools utilizing that to, that's a part of that refinement protocol.
Sounds great, and y'all are setting some target outcomes that you're hoping to achieve through this, or that's going to be maybe part of the?
Well, aligned, totally aligned with our, we have benchmarks and, and outcomes that totally align with our strategic plan right now, and those are the ones that are the, are the main ones that we're utilizing to, to make sure we reach those targets. Ms. Simpson.
As someone who was here in 20, well, it's 2018 when we started implementing restorative practices, and I would say, you know, even in implementing in 2018, it's time to re-up and revamp and revise because that was, that was a little while ago now at this point. I'm so glad we are ahead of the curve, and we're doing it because it's the right thing to do for students, not because we're trying to be ahead of the curve. So, I really appreciate this continued revamp and the push that we are doing it. It's not optional, it's not voluntary, it's not if, you know, if you feel so compelled, we're doing this work. So, I think two questions, I'm wondering, our strategic plan asks all, all schools to adopt a cultural framework, which we know some schools have capturing kids' hearts, we know some schools maybe have responsive classrooms, I'm not sure if that's still going, and we have restorative practices, which I do believe the other two frameworks are probably building the culture for restorative practices, but can you all talk maybe about how people are making sure they're weaving both of those into the work they're doing for school culture?
Sarah, I'm looking back because, and not to put you on the spot, Amy, but Amy Miller is here, our Director of Integrated Academic Behavioral Support, and her team actually really is leading some of the work with restorative practices, so I didn't know if she was itching to, to say something, but what I can, okay, absolutely. okay, absolutely.
So we have seven schools still implementing capturing kids' hearts as of next year. We have two implementing responsive classroom. But we do have the expectation that all schools are implementing restorative practices. So some may be implementing what we call kind of big R restorative practices and then little r restorative practices. So what we've done is with that expectation of the restorative practices self-assessment we're putting out next year, all schools will be doing that. And we've tried to do some crosswalks between capturing kids' hearts, responsive classroom and restorative practices. So people see that alignment. So we say it as capturing kids' hearts and responsive classrooms are just two more tools in order to implement a true restorative practice framework. But we can provide all the training to do just for short practices as well in-house, so.
That works for me. I think that's helpful because I, I see capturing kids' heart, a lot about building that positive culture, which you need to be able to do as you all distinguish the restorative practice and the restorative justice, right? Two different approaches to this work. So once you have that good culture, it's easier to think about what you need to do on the justice side of that. Appreciate your answer about measuring success because that is a metric in the strategic plan. So I'm looking forward to thinking about that. And you know, one day you all might retire away from Durham Public Schools. And I think one of the challenges that we have is that folks leave and programs leave with them or implementation and great ideas have left with them. Really great principles move on and things shift and change. So what does it look like to create some sustainability? And make this be like how Durham Public Schools does business and not just how Dr. Lomar Maddox Perry does her work, you know?
I think part of that is, you know, you've already taken those steps by codifying it in policy really. But also if you look at some of the restructuring that has happened around the district, including the, the integrated academic and behavior systems department, that work is a combination of MTSS, which is the school improvement framework. And those MTSS team members, including two specialists and the director worked consistently on implementing the cultural framework. So it has been embedded in our total school improvement framework for the district. So even when we do decide that we are retiring, which is coming, you know, pretty soon, I guess in the next five years or so, I don't know. But whenever that does happen, there is a structure already in place to make sure that the work continues. And if we are able to get a really strong policy update, then it will be codified.
I, I appreciate that. And again, I just thank y'all for continuing to work on this because we know that it is in the best interest of our students. And I think the conflict resolution that they're learning from this goes outside of those school doors, right? This ability to be able to talk and navigate conflict and, and issues is skills that they can use forever. So thank you all so much. I look forward to considering the policy later and also hearing updates of how this pilot is going so that we can keep an eye on that as well. Thank you.
Ms. Chavez.
All right. Thank you for all of this. I do think it is some of our most important work. And I visited New Directions recently and that was very cool to see. And thank you, Dr. Maddox Perry for being there and just, you know, allowing me to kind of see what our, our redirecting, our restorative work looks like in that, in that arena. So it seems like kind of a hidden gem. Now, what else did I want to say? I think this work is important because a lot of it shape is really about shaping the relationship or the association that a kid has with school, with learning at school. And I think that more than, I just think that relationship is really fundamental. And if it's disrupted early on, a lot of times they can go for years having that negative association with school. Then they get to high school and they, you know, it's very, it's very difficult. So restoring that relationship itself at, at a young age, at any age, is really fundamental to keeping our kids, you know, at school. And not only like enrolled, but attending because we have, you know, a lot of kids who do miss a lot of days of school and we want them to be there and we want them to feel, you know, good and supported when they're there as well. So I, I wanted to say, I really liked that you have in here the model restorative language and mindset and staff interactions and school leadership. I think the more that we can build restorative practices and restorative and restorative justice in, in our interactions with adults at all levels, including the board, the more effective we will be in supporting these practices with our students. So I, I like that you highlighted that. And all of us know that adulting includes relearning things that, you know, that we need to be more effective community members. So I have one very specific question and then a suggestion. With the digital violations that are highlighted in the matrix, do we attend to those that happen outside of the school physical space? And/or outside the school day? Because a lot of time, we know that a lot of the space that our students occupy is virtual. And that affects their relationships in the classroom. And so can you just comment on how much we attend to that with our, or, or want to with the, with our, our discipline policies, practices and restorative practices in particular?
Right. So a big part of our community partnerships are around conflict mediation. And even, you know, if there's not a necessarily required, you know, response that would result in perhaps an accountability measure for a student. We still want to make sure that students who are experiencing conflicts or are not feeling that they have a sense of belonging at their building, they have an opportunity to work, whether it is with their school counselors, their school social workers, or any other trusted adult in the building to work through those, those processes. So even if something occurs not on the school, you know, computer, if it is brought to our attention, we absolutely will support providing some response that helps to heal if any harm has occurred. We also are, are recipients of the say something alerts. So we oftentimes are able to provide response right alongside school administration if they request that for, for some issues that may not occur during the school day. For those issues that do occur during the school day, we also will provide, you know, any support. And most of the times, those things will, will make their way into the school community. And when it becomes, you know, of course, an issue of safety or creating a disruption to the school day, then it would require, you know, some more responsive approaches from school leaders around that, even if it did not occur at school.
Thank you. That's helpful to understand. And then I wonder if, I'm glad the policy will come in the fall. I know this has been a work in progress for a while. I'm just wondering how the board can get involved with that. I, can it come to the policy committee? Which now we have one because we just passed that policy. After it is worked on with you all or what, how, what can the flow be? And last year, Chair Rogers and Vice Chair Carter Otten and I kind of worked on an in-depth look at forty-three oh one, if that's right, number, yeah, forty-three oh one. And had some recommendations for that. In particular, the things that I'm, let's see, that I am concerned with are one, some infractions I think are still subjective that lead to OSS. And and I think Dr. Lewis, you've commented on this, they can be sources of racial disparities because they are more subjective. And so bias can, you know, play into how staff, you know, read those or kind of code those, like disrespect. So how can we have more clear definitions around some of those? That's one thing I'm interested in, as well as data monitoring and having establishing via policy, regular reporting to the board of various discipline metrics with the aim of just supporting and increasing accountability in this area. This is, it's really, I think important that it's something that we're all looking at and analyzing. It's not easy really to, to do what is outlined in the strategic plan. Which is to address these, you know, disparities that we have around race, race and gender and students with disabilities. But we, and we have to, that's why I think we need to put a lot of attention to it. So so I appreciate all the work that's happened. Are there any recommendations for how the board can contribute in this way in a, or the policy committee or something can work on this as well? Because I think this is something we want to make sure is really a strong product.
Yeah, this is certainly something that could make its way to the policy committees. We think about, from a long term, long-term standpoint in beginning to institutionalize some of this work. Most definitely because, you know, the, some of those, what I refer to as the dreaded D's, disruptive behavior can be subjective in, in, in some instances. And so making sure we are really intentional about the language that we're including these policies that are not allowing or accounting for more suspensions, so to speak, you know, so really looking at the system holistically. And I will just say this too, is I think it's hugely important to understand that this, this work is multifaceted. From the standpoint of, you know, there's more that we have to look at, you know, overall, you know, I definitely hear the conversations about alternative settings. Yes, they, they have their place, but most importantly, in my opinion, putting more emphasis on the tier one instruction, you know, building that community, building relationships between teachers and students, students and students. And, and, and training them as well, you know, so that they can resolve conflict because this work has to be that serious and we have to move with that sense of urgency because if we're not teaching kids those skills inside of our buildings, when they get out in the neighborhoods and there's conflict, what do they do? Unfortunately, sometimes they pick up a weapon. And so it's, this work is personal, you know, and so and they know it too. And I want to send a huge shout out to Dr. Maddox Perry. I went over to Hillside to hear some presentations that were made by students. And one group talked about our restorative practices work and had some suggestion for us. And I said, I need to get you in front of someone else. And so we scheduled a meeting with those students and heard from them. And I always operate from the standpoint of, you know, nothing for us without us. And so we were able to listen to those students and get feedback. And I think you're utilizing those students in a, in a major way. And so absolutely, to short answer your question, yeah, we definitely can bring this through the policy committee if that's the will of the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Tab, do you have anything?
Thank you. Really good present, presentation. Thank you so very much.
Thank you for this presentation. I'm, I'm sitting right in the middle of the frustration that Ms. Byer suggested and looking forward to what's to come. When I think about the presentation, I would like to know, and I'm not sure if my colleagues would like to know, a little bit more about phase three of the work. And the stakeholder feedback, there were completed surveys with various stakeholder groups. I'd like to know some more about the demographics of those groups, who those people are, what the response rates were. How you sought that information? And I see that you say you prioritize multilingual access and equity of voice. I wonder if that was, I'd like to hear some testimonials maybe from students, from families who have been involved in giving feedback around this work. I know you're working on district alignment. Dr. King, you talked about how this work was voluntary. I'd like to know how you are measuring if a school is ready for this, right? Because when we look at schools and we're comparing suspension rates from Lakewood Montessori versus Lucas Middle School, are we looking, are we comparing apples to apples or oranges or not, or apples to oranges? Because if Lucas is not as ready as Lakewood Montessori Middle School, then they're not going to yield the same results. Regardless of the demographic of the student. If there's not a guidance counselor there full time, if there's not an AP or if they don't, if they have a long-term temp in the sixth grade building, if the transition plans haven't been put in place for IEPs effectively. All those things are going to have an impact on the culture of that school. And if a school isn't ready to adopt the restorative practices and the restorative justice, I'm not saying that it's an option. Right? Like they're not being ready isn't, is not an excuse, but what tools do they need to get ready? If they are continually measuring not ready? And how can the district support that and make sure that that's maintained over the course of time? I hope that you guys are looking at that. I'd also like to see some surveys as students are starting this work. I know we, it's starting in elementary school, but I'd love to see some real conversations around what students are learning and if they are able to implement and speak to some of the restorative practice work that they can do at certain levels of their education. Because we want to see that growing and improving. I don't know how you would measure that or what that would look like. In some spaces, in the public school system in Milwaukee, they are having a course for students that teach them how to do the restorative practice circle together, that teach them how to intentionally use their language, intentionally work with each other and direct conflict. Also how to engage and advocate for themselves when they're in conflict with adults. And so it could be interesting to see what DPS could do around educating students in actually participating in restorative practice work by choice earlier rather than later. Because hopefully those tools will emerge in better results and outcomes for them over time. And like Ms. Chavez said, I'd like to see some of those same conversations about the policy and how we're, you all are monitoring that data. How we're, you know, what you can tell us about what you're learning from that data and how you're pivoting for educators and for students with that data. But I appreciate you being here. I appreciate the work you're doing. I will follow up with some feedback via email also. Okay. Oh, Ms. Chavez, go ahead.
I just want to say, I didn't want to take too much time, but I had the same questions about the survey data or the, like all of that, the, how many people came and demographics and things like that. So would just love to know more about the engagement of people thus far.
Ms. Carol, no, everybody's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next item on our agenda is also Dr. King's. We appreciate you bringing back the policies for second read. See, uh, policy thirty-five twenty, forty-three twenty-six and seventy-eight hundred. Ms. Chavez, you sent some edits that you wanted the board to consider late afternoon. Do you want to lead off this conversation?
Happy to. So yeah, thank you for, again, working on this. We, I know we want to get things rolling for the start of the school year. So yeah, I sent this to board members and Dr. Lewis and Dr. King a few hours ago. Well, but anyway, uh, what the things I would like to see added are the regular reporting of incidents of physical restraint, mechanical restraint and seclusion to the board. the, uh, regular reporting of incidents of physical restraint, mechanical restraint and seclusion to the board. Um, the policy does note in alignment with state law that, um, the board reports incidents in each of these categories to the state board event. But there is, and there's reporting to parents, there's reporting to the state board event, but it doesn't, there's nothing that mentions how the board gets the information, so I just want to add something about reporting to the board on a regular basis for all of those, and, um, and the second thing that I noted was, um, the, I'd like to s- to see us change the, the section on secl- on seclusion um, to say that parents will be notified of any seclusion, not just ten minutes or more, or those that don't meet the criteria of a permissible seclusion. Uh, disability rights MC notes that, um, while, you know, the, the previous one is, um, required, it is best practice for the school. Um, quote, best practice, practice for the school to provide you with a report, you the parent, every time seclusion is used on your student. So, those are some of my suggested edits, um, for this evening, but I know, uh, I only sent it at like four, and so I don't know, uh, um, Mr. Malone, you, um, probably only got a little bit of time to look at it, and we want your input. Um, so, and the other, well, let me pause there, go ahead, yeah.
Excuse me, um, we don't have any major concerns with your edits. Um, the, obviously it's the board decision about whether or not you do the reporting, and that doesn't cause us any concern. I do think that we have a little issue with the amount of information that you're asking to be reported to the board. We think that that may create a little bit of a FERPA issue in the way that FERPA is set up, but certainly the concept of reporting to the board and whatever basis is, is not really a board, I'm sorry, it's not so much a legal issue as maybe the administration. Um, it's, it just could be a lot more work. And, um, probably that's the same as it relates to the change in the definition of reporting for seclusion. Um, you know, this would apply not only to the EC students, but to the regular students also. And that could mean that every time there's a fight, if the principal separates two kids and puts them in a room for a minute, you know, under your revised definition, every time that occurs, that would need to be a report, and that may just be setting up a, a system where you're gonna unintentionally create policy violations because people aren't gonna think to report those one-minute separations of kids. Um, but the concept of reporting, um, again, it's, we, the law firm doesn't have any concerns with kind of what you proposed, other than what I've noted.
Okay, um, and so, um, around the reporting to the board of within these three categories, what, um, type of information did you feel might be a FERPA violation?
Just the detail that you're providing for each incident, even if it didn't include the kid's name, it does provide, um, information that, that could be deemed, um, you know, identifiable information, and the way that the board's access to this information is, is allowed is, you know, need to know. And, and getting it kind of generically across the board, you know, it may not be that you necessarily need to know it for that incident, so w- we would think if you could just maybe not ask for as much of it upfront, but then a board member, if you wanted to see it in a particular situation, then it would be more of a need-to-know kind of situation at that point, because you'd be asking for it for a specific reason. And again, we think that'd be fine, again, the idea of getting the information, um, is not problematic.
Um, I guess I would just like, you know, some more specificity on what might violate FERPA, I know, the, the, the things that were included, and these are the, this was just taken, I just copied and pasted it, from what would be reported to parents, um, but it says the report, this report must include the following, the date, time, the date, time of day.
There where you're referencing, sorry.
Yes.
This is in the revised policy?
This is in, I, I'm reading from what I sent you all at four o'clock, so it's not pub- it's not posted.
Okay.
The language, however, is taken from the revised policy.
And what portion of the revised policy?
Let me tell you exactly. Yeah, so an example, there are three sections, physical restraint, mechanical restraint and seclusion. So for instance, for mechanical restraint, it's under what is currently number five, written reports to parents. Um, and so perhaps the board does not need this volume of information. Um, but I included what is A, B, and C on that list.
Yeah, correct, and giving this information to the parent about their kid is certainly okay, and, and again, it, if, um, I, I, I think that it's, if, if it were just, I think, first of all, let me say this, we're not saying that it's, is a FERPA violation, it's just if, if the information were, um, you know, because it's somewhat, because you're asking for it kind of on a student-by-student basis, if you ask for it more generically, like how many kids had injuries or the kinds of, more generically across the board, instead of so specific for each kid, I think we would feel a little bit more comfortable about it, and then if the board member wanted to ask about a specific, wanting to get the additional information at that point, it would be more targeted and feel a little bit more comfortable, but I, we're not saying, just to be clear, that if you went with the language as is, that it is a FERPA violation, we're definitely not saying that.
Um, yeah, go ahead, Ms. I'm said.
Sorry, I just want to jump in on this, what is reported to the state board of education, what information is included in that report?
Dr. King, do you know that, sorry?
I don't know specifically what it is, I think there's a form that we have to complete, but I don't know the, the, I can find that out quickly.
And I asked that to, to wonder if the board should get whatever is reported out to the state board, that our reports would mirror each other, and then if there is a request for more information, then we could go from there, but we should find out what that looks like for the state board of education, because since it, that's going out anyway, it feels like an easy thing to send to us on an annual basis.
Then that puts on page three, item like seven under, I don't even, this thing is so long. Annual, wait, that, uh, uh, number six is state board, not, seven is office of civil rights. Board will maintain a record of physical restraints by school personnel that result in observable physical injury to a student, and will provide the information annually to the state board. So, you mean what detail or beyond the list, or?
Can you ask that last part of your question again?
You mean what detail goes beyond the list, it's just the record?
Yeah, I guess whatever that list looks like, whatever the report looks like to go to the, um, state board of education. I would, I was envisioning the board getting that same report, but I thi- and it goes for each one of the categories.
Generally, when the state requires us to report those things, they tend to be in those syntax kind of database, and, and it's generally, uh, around numbers, um, v- very rarely do they ask us for um, very detailed individualized student information about that, so it'll be how many students, um, and I'm, and I, I put the question out there, so I'm gonna get additional information, but generally it'll be, you know, it will lay out the state statute and say how many students, um, were injured as laid out in state statute relative to restraint and seclusion in your district, that's the way those kinds of, um, that data is generally requested, um, from the state. So it's not very, it's not, it doesn't tend to be demographic information, is, is I guess what I'm saying.
Okay, um, so I would have a follow-up that I fear that you don't have the answer to. When is this reported to the state? I know it says annually, so we're wrapping up the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. When is this data reported to the state for twenty-four, twenty-five?
I would imagine it would be somewhere in the range of July thirty to July fifteen, that's usually when we do most of those kinds of reporting. And what I would share is apparently there is not a report that is submitted, um, it is data that is automatically pulled through the, um, it's, it's pulled through Power School in the past, so I would imagine it will be pulled from Infinite Campus.
Okay. Is there a place, opportunity, um, for the board to review the data that is being reported along, I guess, also in her new policy committee alongside, um, the data, so we can see what's already being reported and what more information, what cadence the board would be interested in seeing that information and how, and the specificity of what Durham would want.
Can, can you say the first part of that again, so I, I want to make sure I understood what you were asking?
So we're gonna modify this policy to include a request for data monitoring and reporting to the board. It would be helpful to see real-time data of what's being reported to the state if we want to modify the policy so that we're getting the information like Ms. Chavez is requesting, and we can look and see what you're already working with to see what's reasonable for adjustment.
I'm sorry. Can you tell me what you mean by real-time data?
Like the data for this year, like look at what's being reported right now, or for the end of this school year. That's what, this is what they are automatically pulling, this is what they already have access to. And alongside the policy changes that we're looking to make, to say, okay, how much extra work would they have to go to, to get the specificity of what Ms. Chavez was asking for today, and if that's something we can build consensus over as part of our policy work and not something that we kind of workshop right now. Right, but we look at what they are already using, what data they're already reporting to the state, to see if that's enough. Because we have no idea what it is right now, so we don't know if it's enough.
Enough for us?
Enough for us, enough to satisfy what Ms. Chavez was asking for in this policy modification, um, and, yeah.
But I think there's also a consensus, figuring out consensus, if there is consensus around the ask, what Ms. Chavez is ask about the amount of information.
Right.
Then getting to the.
Yeah, and I won't know for myself without seeing what they're already pulling. Right, so what they're already pulling and reporting, does that make sense?
Yeah, I know what I think though, so. I, I, I was, I will say I was thinking annually when we get the data reports around, um, suspensions or even when we do grades, because I think that's a little earlier in the year, that this report would come with that along with demographic information, but that's just, I already knew. Ms. Chavez, uh, Ms. Carter-otten's got her hand.
Um, Ms. Carter-otten.
Um, I feel that we have an unreadiness to move this po- policy forward, is what I'm hearing from colleagues and what I'm feeling also, because in addition to these pieces of data, I really appreciate the, um, thoughts that the Durham Advocates for Exceptional Children sent us today by email and spoke about today, um, in public comment. There's some really great ideas in there that I want some time to think about more, and I would like administration sometime to um, think about whether to incorporate or not. Well, and also I'll back up a minute and say this feels like something we don't want to mess up, like there's potential to hurt, to harm children, and so I don't want to move too quickly on this. I'm trying to remember during our last meeting, I think that you, Dr. King, expressed some, um, sense of urgency to move this forward. I understand that what you've proposed to us is steps beyond and better than possibly what we have currently in policy, which is one reason to go ahead and pass something tonight. But I'm concerned that then we're gonna end up not revisiting it, and there's so much, it could be so much better than it is, is, is the sense that I'm feeling right now, and I don't know if other board members are also feeling like they want to spend more time on this, and I would also like to hear from you, Dr. King, on what happens if we don't pass it tonight, what are the real implications of that? When can we revisit it, can it be tossed over to the policy committee? For more time to be spent on such an important policy.
Looking at the boss, like he, it, um, so I, I think there's, uh, you know, an immediate concern, you know. Part of where this work came from was the realization that this important professional development that we are, um, that is a part of this entire package, right, was, is, um, kind of this move to make that professional development um, required, right, in that that would strengthen our ability to make sure all of our staff members, um, who we think need to be provided with professional development will be because it includes, because it is now required by the board, those would in, that would be the, uh, policy seventy-eight hundred and thirty-five twenty. So, you know, those pieces, um, are, you know, in my mind, quite critical. Um, you know, the restr- the restraint and seclusion pieces, you know, i- in, in my mind, what we're talking about, uh, would be additions to the policy, right? If, if we wanted to do some different things. Um, t- to my thinking, um, we can always come back and add additional pieces to the policy, um, if at some point in the future we decide we want the policy to be more stringent, right? Um, but, but I would add this, and I think it's important for us to, to, to kind of keep in mind. I don't think that's gonna be a simple process, because I think we're gonna have to do some pretty um, complex thinking about board members, you, you're gonna have to ask yourselves and grapple with whether or not you want to put your staff members in a place where you require them to go beyond what the law requires, um, and I think, you know, those are gonna be some, some sticky issues that we're gonna need to hear probably back and forth, um, from, um, our, our partners at Tharrington, um, and, and, and have some kind of ongoing discussion about those things, and you know, from my mind, we've, you know, we've been working on this policy for, um, in these revisions for almost a year. Um, I would certainly hate to, um, not move the work that we've done now because we think that we might need to do some additional work to it, because I don't think those two things are, um, um, contrary to each other, I think we can implement what we've asked for here, and if we want to come back and add those additional pieces, um, I think we can come back and do those, uh, once we've done the, you know, the thinking through and working through of those issues, um, and revise the policy as necessary, um, but, you know, uh, I, I certainly would hate to see us, um, slow the momentum that we've built around this work, um, over a pretty significant amount of time.
Get that, thank you, Dr. King, I guess I wonder, like, the board hasn't seen it until we just saw it at our last meeting, so we haven't been working on it as a board for the past year, and I am still not clear on, like, whether students that would be affected by this, or families that would be affected by this, or staff that are on the ground in schools have been able to weigh in on this. Um, yet, can, so I guess those are the concerns that I have, especially because now we're getting these, um, we're getting feedback on things that feel, to me, like, not that controversial, like, why do we have to allow for chokeholds, for example? Or why can't we use, require the use of non-physical or non-seclusion methods first before we do other things, like those, those to me have come out from when we have our families looking at it and they're responding to it, so why didn't they come out earlier? Um, if there was a process whereby you guys were talking to folks that would be impacted by this.
So I want to be clear, we, we, we haven't been talking to folks who would be impacted by this, this is a, a policy that is driven by law, by the law, not by conversations with folks. We, we're trying to get our practice, you know, aligned with the law here, um, and And so I think those kinds of questions are the questions that I'm talking about that we can certainly go back and look at. And if the board wants to go a step beyond what the law requires, based on those considerations, we can certainly do that going forward. But again, uh this work uh has been driven. Completely by what the law requires, not by conversations about. What folks would like to see as a part of a restraint and seclusion uh policy, but what the law requires of us.
I'll just say one more thing, which is I personally am hoping that we can do. Then each thing that we're doing here on this board and in this district, we're trying to do better than what the state of North Carolina is just. You know, the bare minimum of what's being required. I think that we're trying to be the best, right? So in this situation also.
So colleagues. When I'm listening to you all, it sounds like the biggest, most controversial piece is policy forty-three-twenty-six. So could we do thirty-five-twenty and seventy-eight-hundred? And bring back forty-three-twenty-six through Policy Committee? Ms. Umstead, then Ms. Harold Goff.
I'm not looking at all, all three of them at the same time, but isn't one about training on the others? Like, aren't they kind of interwoven?
In some ways, but but I think we can operate around seventy-eight-hundred-and-thirty-five-twenty without forty-three-twenty-six. Probably couldn't do forty-three-twenty-six without seventy-eight-hundred-and-thirty-five-twenty, though.
Ms. Harold Goff, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, um, uh, I feel like um I'm 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 starting to understand, like. So I've been in the academics meeting and so we talked about these policies and I heard everything and maybe. I could have done a better job to have some of those conversations. Prior to this meeting, a little bit more, but my thought is that. All the things that came, the reason why there's so much attention that came to these policies now is because there was things that needed to be addressed in the policy. And so it made it more visible. So I'm happy, I'm glad to have heard from community via email and public comment. And um all the things that have come from the board around other things that we need to revisit in this policy. I still think that we need to do that, and at the same time, I want to honor the work that. Has been done over the course of the year um to make this policy stronger. So what I have heard from community is that even though there are other things that they're suggesting that we need to consider. Now that this policy has been elevated, that it's been more visible. I think that we should, we we can go ahead and. Affirm the work that has been done where it is with an understanding that now that it's visible, we have to. We want to bring it back to Policy Committee and consider these other changes. I think for me, that feels like um. How we keep the momentum of the work going, so I would like to to not take it aside. I would like to acknowledge everything that has been el- that has been highlighted, that has been brought to our attention. And, you know, now that we have Policy Committee, we can prioritize those things in that work and still move this policy for, you know. With the changes that have already been revised. Otherwise, I mean, in the future, we could have policies. And somebody suggests a revision for a specific purpose, and then it gets bogged down with many other purposes. And so then you don't move that work forward. So little by little, piece by piece, I think. I would like to.
Offer a motion?
Make a motion.
Okay.
That we approve these policies as amended here.
As amended? What are you amending?
I mean, these, well, the the suggested edits.
From administration, as is from administration?
Yes. Okay, help me say it better. For second read.
This is the second read. This is the second read, so we we're approving.
Okay, y'all help me with this now. All three, I'm making a motion that we. All right, I'm making a motion that we approve the draft policy changes. The change reviews to policies thirty-five-twenty, forty-three-twenty-six and seventy-eight-hundred. Second read, that we approve that.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Harold Goff, seconded by Ms. Byer, to approve draft changes. To policy seventy-eight-hundred, thirty-five-twenty and forty-three-twenty-six. For second read. Is there further discussion? Ms. Chavez.
Okay, um I just wanted to go back to our conversation about data collection. Just to name that I would like us to go beyond what is required um. And what is rec- sent to the board, what is required by the State Board of Education. And that also the policy states that the board reports to the State Board. So I don't know if we need to look at that, but. That if administration is actually reporting, maybe we should change that. And then I think. In having some conversation with my colleagues, I think further illuminating the difference between seclusion and isolation is important. I wanted to name just that my desire in seeing some amount of detail about the incidents is. To look at trends, um like at schools. Um, in the past, um, before I was on the board. But when I was on the Budget Process Advisor Committee, there was detail about like suspensions and um. Or ISS and OSS, like by school, and you could see trends. And so I think seeing some of these details without violating FERPA would be important. So we can figure out exactly what those would be. And I I I always think the demographic data is important to see who were, who's, you know, being affected by this. And then um. I think I would like us to align this not only with state law, I mean, that's important, but also with best practices. And um Disability Rights MC had some, you know, interesting information that we could look deeper at. But there are lots of, I think, organizations and thank you to. Durham Advocates for Exceptional Children for also sending that us that information to. One question. Dr. King, I wanted to ask, what are your concerns about going beyond what the law requires? If you could kind of state more, you said in, or suggest it might be difficult to ask staff to go beyond what the law requires?
Not difficult, I I I just think you have to grapple with what that means. For instance, I'll give you a a perfect example. There's some con- conversation about the use of the prone restraint, right? Prone restraints are legal, they're certainly frowned upon. We had our SROs in the building today and they talked about the fact that there are times when, you know, we found young people with weapons in our schools. It could possibly happen that in a scenario where a young person had a weapon in our school. The the quickest way to regain the safety of the school would be for a staff member to engage in a prone restraint. We would not want that to be the case, we would never advocate for that to be the case. But given the choice between a child having access to a weapon, right? And a child being placed in a prone restraint for two minutes in order to restore the safety of the school. I think we would choose that prone restraint for two minutes, right? And so if we go beyond what the law requires. We are then placing that staff members mem- member in a scenario where he has to choose between those two choices, right? What I think we've done in this policy is made it clear that, you know, something like a prone restraint should be the absolute. Absolute last resort, and you should never do it if there is any reasonable reason. Or any reasonable opportunity not to do it, right? But that's a, that's a specific example of why, you know. We we don't necessarily want to go beyond what the law requires. Obviously, I I know that's a scenario and I I pray to God it never is one that we face. But that's, that's kind of what I'm talking about when I say you have to grapple with all those issues, because we have to grapple with everything that may happen. And kind of the difficult kind of scenarios that we put staff members in. Sometimes when 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 we go to to those kinds of places with policy.
I I would, uh, thank you for sharing your thoughts on that. Um, I. I just want to make clear, I'm not advocating for um that it all be black and white where we don't use restrain or. Seclusion at all necessarily. I think having those critical conversations would be really good and because those are the. We need to deal with situations like that. There's no doubt that like there's violence in, I mean. In society anywhere. You know, having taught high school, I've seen a number of different situations, so I think that. That there's no, um, I don't want to, we can't like idealize the possibilities um at all. So anyway, I just want to say I'd really like to have those conversations and I'd like the community feedback and all of that. But not in in take into consideration, you know, what um it actually would look like implemented for staff. Anyway, I'll stop talking about this. I will support this going forward or vote for this, but um. And I also want to see it directed to the Policy Committee in August or, you know, yeah, I guess in August. Thanks.
Ms. Carter-otten, then Mr. Tab.
I was wondering if I could propose an amendment to the motion that we um. Pass the policies, um but. Direct this policy to the Policy Committee.
I'm amendable to that?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, just direct forty-three-twenty-six to the Policy Committee, so that it receives attend- that's done and it's going to receive attention.
I was gonna ask that. Okay. All right, Ms. Umstead.
Let me have something different. Um, is there also amendable to add annual reporting to the Board of Education? Just want to make sure that happens. Dr. Lewis is raising his hand. I don't know what that means.
What does that?
So can the board get a copy of? Or get a report about? Everything in this policy where the, it says the board will maintain a record of physical restraints. And that is annually reported to the State Board of Education. Can that be reported to the board?
I think in some form, I mean, would would the board be amenable to the administration agreeing to? Work with um. Our attorneys um in reviewing the state reports and making some determinations about what is. Reasonable to provide to the board so that we would um skirt that uh those FERPA concerns?
That sounds nice. That sounds great. But I'd like us to be clear that anything that goes as a public record to the State Board of Education. Is what we get, right? So you don't get a choice to modify it if it's a public record once it goes there.
Not to them, right? Sure.
Right?
I don't.
If it is, I don't know that it is, I'm just saying if it is.
That was, I was gonna ask, ask a clarifying question if the report that we send to the board is the report, assuming our attorneys. Vet that, that it's, that the board gets the report that we send to the state. And to address your concern, Board Member Chavez, direct the superintendent. I'm already gonna do this anyway, but direct the superintendent to look for trends, because there's a certain group of students that are restrained more than others, right? So we're gonna be, I'm gonna be, we're gonna be looking at that. Would that satisfy the reporting and the trends?
That, I like that idea very much. I still want to, when we go take this to Policy Committee. I I still want the board to be able to have that data as well and that be incorporated. But I, but what you said, I'm fine with that for now. And again, I just want to note that the policy does say the board will report to the State Board of Education. So in my mind, if it says the board will report, the chair should sign off on it. And so not only should we see it, I think. It's like, who signs off on it? Uh, probably the chair and superintendent. That's. I mean, if that's the state law, that the board reports it, then the board should own that process.
I will say, just sitting here thinking this through, I'm not, I don't think there will be a problem providing the board with everything that goes to DPI. I think the way that you have it written here, it's a lot of information about an individual incident. And and giving it in that manner to the board is where I have a little concern, but but. But the, there were five restraints at the school and what kids, I mean, that kind of information is absolutely fun for the board to receive. I don't see any problem with the board receiving what we send to DPI. It's just the way that it was drafted in this proposed amendment that gave me just a touch of concern.
I, and I understand that, and I, my proposed changes, I will bring back in August. So I get, I get that, what the State Board of Education requirements are different, they're much more limited. Thank you.
Thank you, okay. I want to make sure I got the amendment correct. So we're approving the policies directing forty-three-twenty-six to the Policy Committee. For changes that include demographic data, seclusion, isolation, board reports, data on incidents to mon- uh the trends. Directing the superintendent to monitor the trends in the interim. I think I got that. I think that's everything.
You said monitor the trends in the.
In the interim, the superintendent.
Can you repeat the last part of what you said again? Sorry.
As the data on the incidents, the monitoring the trends around the incidents. That have to be reported, right? Making sure that we're directing the superintendent to do that. Are we? Okay, and then. It is his job, that's, it is, but yeah, but, okay. So. All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, use the same sign. Passes unanimously. Thank you. The next item on our agenda. Uh, it's from administration, pay amendments for social workers, school nurses. Dr. Lewis, are you leading that? Oh, sorry. Dr. Giovanni?
Could pull up the slide, please, the slide deck? Uh, while they're pulling that up, um, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Lewis and DPS community. At this time, it is the request of the superintendent and administration. That the board approved paying school social workers a master's pay supplement. To be paid retroactively to August twenty-twenty-four through May twenty-twenty-five for months' work. It is the superintendent's recommendation that the board authorize these payments to social workers. Next slide, please. The next slide, thank you. That. That the board authorized the payments to social workers that are currently employed by DPS as well as social workers that were employed during this time period. But have since left the district in good standing. Next slide, please. Next slide. It is further the recommendation of administration that the board approved paying DPS-employed school nurses. An eighty-dollar per month local supplement paid as ten-month employees for twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five only. To be paid retroactively from August twenty-twenty-four through May twenty-twenty-five for months' work. It is the recommendation that the board authorize the payments to school nurses that are currently employed by DPS. As well as school nurses that were employed during this time period but have left the district in good standing. The approximate fiscal impact for paying school social workers under this criteria will not exceed eighty. Will not exceed eighty thousand dollars, and the fiscal impact for these payments for school nurses will not exceed nine thousand dollars. These pay recommendations affect approximately twenty DPS staff members. These pay recommendations affect approximately twenty DPS staff members. And next slide, please. And we are happy to take, answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Giovanni. Colleagues. No questions, no comments? A motion? Okay. Um, Ms. Byer, Ms. Umstead, Ms. Chavez, then Ms. Carter Atten.
I appreciate the recommendation. And I wanna give us a chance to be clear as we go forward. And there's been such lack of clarity, um, that through all of the master's pay discussions. Um, so I want us to be crystal clear. Um, and so maybe that's where my questions will try to center. Um, your recommendation aligns with your budget, with the budget request that the board adopted and put before the commissioners for in, the inclusion of school social workers. But it does not include other categories, employees that may have master's degrees. And we have heard advocacy from them and, um, I believe in, uh, from being in Durham a bit, we'll always hear advocacy from all of our groups of employees. And, and so I think there's a need to be crystal clear. Um, your, your recommendation is aligned with the budget request that we put forward and include social workers, uh, the addition of social workers. And this is retro pay for this year. But it does not include those other job categories. Can it, someone or anyone make clear some of that for staff that may be paying attention? That, that's so that we don't further muddy the waters that have been so muddy. Um, and I don't even remember all the job categories. Y'all, there's, there's folks in all different places of our school system. There's instructional support folks. I just don't want more confusion as we try to continue to work our way through this.
I think, I'll take a stab at it, but I would ask my fellow cabinet members to clarify that or flesh out what I'm saying. I do think you stated it, Ms. Byer, with clarity that the current recommendation is that master's pay be paid locally by Durham Public Schools to those having a master's, an appropriate, relevant master's license that teach in the classroom at least fifty percent as well as school social workers where that master's pay, where the master's license is not already a requirement on, for their job description. Those are the two categories that would be, that administration is recommending receive master's pay. Locally funded.
Thank you. That's, that's helpful as we consider this. I kind of wish we had done the budget, um, worksheet that we're about to do and those discussions before we did this discussion. Um, but that, that is helpful. The, this money you said is eighty thousand dollars or not to exceed eighty thousand dollars? And you're even recommending it to pay people that have terminated and left or resigned and left the district? And so where is the eighty thousand dollars coming from?
So I would defer to the finance officer.
So at this point, um, as, as the finance staff, um, has worked to close out the current fiscal year, um, we're happy to report in a public way, um, that we're, we're on track to have a positive budget variance this cycle, um, that will more than be able to accommodate, um, the eighty thousand dollars.
Great. And, um, then my confusion on the nurse supplements is, is we've already approved these. So we don't actually need to approve them tonight. Y'all are just stating publicly that you're making retroactive payment, right? Cause I made the motion way back when. I went back and watched myself make the motion, right?
Correct.
Gotcha. Okay. Um, thank you. That, that helps me with, with clarity. Um, and then I guess on behalf of staff that are anticipating these, if the board approves this, they would not be able to come the July sometime? Is that when payroll would run it? Or were you thinking of it?
We have been, we've been preparing in the background, um, to, cause we'd like to get it done this year, in this year. So, um, so we're prepared to make sure that's taken care of by the close of business on Monday.
You all are ready. Thank you very much. I know this will go a long way with, with folks that, um, as we re- rebuild trust. And I look forward to the House passing a budget that includes master's pay for everyone. Thank you.
Ms. Umstead.
Um, I appreciate y'all bringing this recommendation. I, um, I, some of my comments echo what Ms. Byer said around the other, we know, I think when this first came, um, our school social workers talked about being on the teacher scale. And so this, um, when we approved master's pay for teachers, that they would be included. And so I'm wondering about other job categories that might be on that scale. Um, some that are also in schools. Like I know we've received emails from interventionists. Um, an email from an AIG person. And so, um, curious what the kinda dialogue or discussion might have been about any other job categories that are on that scale as well.
Again, um, I just wanna invite my colleagues to, um, add on to what I'm going to say. It has been, I think Mr. Teeter has said this and Ms. Hager has said this a couple of times, but never kind of succinctly. I think that the initial thinking was that we wanted to encourage teachers to remain, to staff to remain in the classroom. And if, if my memory serves me correctly, back in maybe September, um, there was a lot of conversation around the social worker piece. And there was a presentation regarding like how many people that was. And there was a lot of conversation around how many folks these would apply to. And I believe that, um, at that time, I did indicate to the board that the data that we, the board had was not reliable. And I did not anticipate that it would take this long. Um, but through the hard work and dedication of Ms. Hager and Mr. Teeter, we've been able to triangulate the data from finance and HR and state with confidence to this board and this community that these are, that we have a finite number of folks that we can recommend as administration, receive this master, receive pay for their master's degrees.
For twenty-four, twenty-five, no, people would know that this is no guarantee. This is retro. We didn't, we're not sure yet where we're gonna go for twenty-five, twenty-six.
That is correct. This is, uh, but it is twenty-four, twenty-five only. I believe that the board has it for, um, yeah, that is correct. Twenty, it does say twenty-four, twenty-five only. This is not moving forward. This is just retro pay.
I think, um, first I wanna be clear, I, you know, always love paying people. So want to make sure people get extra money in their paychecks and so excited about that. But I think it's important for us to think holistically about the whole district when we're making moves like this. And, um, it reminds me of a time where we moved bus driver pay, but didn't look at other employees who were on that same sched, like, uh, in that same job, not jobs, excuse me, but in that same pay range. And then there was also lots of comments of like, what about us, right? And so I think how do we be intentional about looking outward for the folks who have emailed us, right? They may not have organized in the same way, but have emailed us and said, what about me? I'm an interventionist. I spend time with some of our students who have the most needs. May not have a classroom of record for me, but like, what about some of the work that we need to do? And so I just think, I wanna see us zoom out, do big picture analysis of that and bring recommendations that, um, look at all those different pieces. That feels really important to me.
Ms. Chavez and then Ms. Carter Atten. But if, to that end of what Ms. Umstead just said.
Um, I, I do wish we were doing retro pay for all certified staff who would have received it pre-two thousand thirteen. And also, um, I would like to make a motion that, um, we approve the, um, retro pay for school social workers, um, for August twenty twenty-four through May twenty twenty-five. And school nurses, I'm confused. Do we need that mo- that's what you said? We don't need? We don't need. Okay. Period.
So just for clarity with the nurses, that's why we added it? Is that when we went back and we're looking at it, the board had approved, the way that it's phrased, and there was a recess in there, and I think Mr. Malone was here and he remembers this. And there was conversation around, Dr. Lewis, I think asked five times, his staff, duh, do nurses normally receive supplements? And the statement was yes. And then the board, based on that, said, we want to vote to approve a lo- the local, an increase of eighty dollars to nurses, an increase of eighty dollars. So technically, that was not true, that nurses did not normally really receive a supplement. So that's why we brought this, just for clarity. Because again, it is important when we're, um, making these payments that staff has provided the board with accurate information. And so that's why we brought this. So I think you did approve it, but not to the level of clarity that the current CFO was comfortable with, nor the current assistant superintendent for HR was comfortable with. So that, uh, I'm not the chair, but I'm Ms.
Then, then can I add to my motion?
Okay. Did you wanna respond to what Dr. Giovanni was saying, Ms. Byer?
Well, it's on the notion of nurses, I guess, because we have some that are also employed by the health department. And do we need to specify that this does not include those employed by the health department?
It doesn't, it's included in the PowerPoint and in the precis, but the motion would need to clarify that this is Durham Public Schools employed nurses only.
Yeah, that's what occurred to me. I mean, we keep unintentionally making the, yeah, okay.
Then I'll, I'll restate.
Thank you. And that, and the clarification that I requested is, uh, is it through June or is it just through May?
I think these are basically ten-month employees. So, so the August through May pay periods would be what we're taking care of.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Chavez.
Okay, so to restate, um, and finish the motion appropriately, um, I move that we authorize retro pay for school social workers from August twenty twenty-four through May twenty twenty-five. And also, um, authorize retro pay for DPS-employed school nurses um, at eighty dollars per month of local supplement for the same dates.
Second. Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Chavez, seconded by Ms. Carter Atten to approve retroactive pay for school social workers and school nurses for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Uh, is there any further discussion? Mr. Tab?
Thank you. I just wanna make sure that what, the motion that's been made, that is very, very clear to everyone that's in here, so that we don't go down the wrong rabbit hole again and be in the same situation. So I just wanted to say that. So can we make sure that I'm looking at everybody in here? Because I don't wanna come back and we have this discussion again about the same thing. I wanna be very clear with that as a board member. So, um, I'm looking around, I'm not the chair, but I'm just saying, don't put me in this situation. I don't wanna be in this situation again. So.
We'll, we'll all be together June thirtieth, making sure those checks go out. Uh, uh, Ms. Umstead, Ms. Haroldoff.
I just, I wanted to, um, ask Dr. Giovanni if that slight thing that we missed on the first motion about the nurses the first time, did we clarify that in this motion?
I believe so. I have consulted with Mr. Malone as well. And, um, I said, make sure you're paying close attention to this so that we don't have that mistake again. And it is obviously a lot of semantics and nuances, but when you're spending public funds, it is very important that, um, you do have that clarity. So based on my interpretation of Ms. Chavez's motion and Mr. Malone's, that that slight nuance based on with her motion does allow the finance office to cut the payments to those school, the DPS-employed school nurses.
Thank you.
Ms. Umstead. Um, two questions. Is the school, our school, is this, is the school nurse supplement included in twenty-five, twenty-six budget?
It was not a consideration. Um, and so we will, a- as we work to, to bring things in line, uh, for the new year, um, um, Mr. Barfield and I, on my staff, will have to do some work to, to make sure we get that situated.
Great. Thank you. Uh, secondly, only school social workers here, so not social workers that might be employed in other places within the district, just to be clear. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And is there any rationale behind the choice for just school versus not other social workers who might be in the district? I'm not talking contract social workers, but I think we have McKinney-Vento social work. We have.
I asked this question in gender review and y'all gave me an answer. And I'm nervous that y'all aren't giving me the same answer right now. So, um, the, we were told that McKinney-Vento social worker is the only like district-wide social worker, something of that nature. And that they would be getting that supplement. So the answer that Ms. Umstead was just given was no, they're not getting it. Right? Was a, a head. I thought it was a no.
It did.
Yes, Ms. Hager and Mr. Teeter both shook their heads, no.
We can go back and look at the list, um, Chair Rogers, and make sure we've got everyone captured. But we've gone through the list. I don't have the list pulled up right in front of me, but I'll be happy to pull it up and make sure we've got everyone covered that should be.
So we can table this motion? Is that okay? Can we table a motion now? No, no, no. I know. I meant until we get through the next section, so she can pull it up. Cause we have a salary administration policy to look at and, uh, the budget prioritization. Oh.
Yep.
Okay, we're gonna take a five-minute recess. Thanks, y'all. Oh. Ms. Chavez? Go ahead if you need to.
I just wanted to amend my emotion, amend my.
We can do that after the recess. Let's do that after the recess.
All right, but.
Okay. Okay. We're gonna go to recess.
Madam Chair, we do, we do have an answer.
Let's go over to you there. There's a baby coming. Congratulations. I need to, yeah.
We are now back in open session. Ms. Hager, you have an update for us on the social worker?
Yes, thank you. So to respond to the question, I think I remember it. Is that, yes, that social worker would receive the master's pay. The McKinney-Vento?
And there's only one district wide, or there are two, okay?
And the discrepancy, they didn't pull into the report, I was just sharing with Attorney Malone. They didn't pull into the report because they had two different site locations, but we've gone through and cross-checked the. Reports that we received, and so that was where the McKinney-Vento folks didn't pull in.
Okay. Ms. Chavez, you want to amend your motion?
Yes, but also just to clarify, there are two McKinney-Vento, is that what you said? Okay. Both of them would come along in this, be included.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Okay, so. I will just amend my motion to say that all DPS social workers would receive retro pay, August twenty twenty. All school social workers and McKinney-Vento social workers. Okay, because there are other social workers too. No? Okay.
If you say school social workers, we're fine.
School social workers, which to clarify includes the McKinney-Vento social workers, August twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five. And the rest of the motion still stands, okay.
Second?
Yeah, you.
Okay, it's been moved by Ms. Chavez, seconded by Ms. Haroldoff, to approve the retroactive pay to. School social workers for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And school nurses. DPS nurses.
Well, a supplement, not master's pay or anything.
Okay. And, okay. So the motion is to pay retroactively the master's pay for. School social workers. For the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And the school, retroactive school nurse supplement for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
For months worked and where they are not already receiving state-funded master's pay.
For the months worked, where they are not already receiving state master's pay. Is there any further discussion, Ms. Umstead?
I'm sorry, just for clarity purposes, the McKinney-Vento social workers that we identified are already in this number? Or would they be in addition to what we projected financially here?
The financial projection not to exceed eighty thousand would be enough to accommodate them if they qualify.
Okay, thank you. And then. So the recommendation is to include those folk. My original question was, is it just school social workers, are there other people in the district and the rationale? But it sounds like we are including the other social workers within the district.
So on the form, the title, other than McKinney-Vento Liaison, their school social worker is next to that name. Where the McKinney-Vento Liaison, they are school social workers.
And so are there, I'm sorry to ask, are there other social workers then that work within the district? No.
No.
Okay, they don't fall into those categories.
There are no social workers in the district that are not school social workers. Or, and the McKinney Vento liaisons are still school social workers. Their titles are just McKinney Vento liaisons.
Okay. Thank you.
That are employed by during public schools, there are, I believe you referenced it, Ms. Umstead, there are contract. There could be, but they are not included, it's only DPS employees.
Um, thank you, this is just one last comment, like, we have to be better about this. Like, it's not okay that for people's pay, we're like, having to figure this out like this? And so we just, we just have to be better. There's no real other things to say, like, we have to be better. So, thank you.
Ms. Byer?
Yeah, and I'm just making sure, do we, does the masters need to be designated on their licensure?
Yes, it does, for both social workers. And the classroom teachers messaging went out today. The board stated that it had to be on their license back in May, I believe. But we did send out, communications sent out today. Notification that it does have to be on your license, so even if you've been getting master's pay as a classroom teacher, for example, if it's not on your license in August, it would not be, you would not be paid for the master's pay until it's placed on your license.
So do, does our motion need to include that language as well for clarity? That's what I'm just.
That's going forward, though.
Correct, and the board did already state that in May, that it had to be on your license for 25, 26.
But that, okay, so. So it, you're not, you don't care about it for this retro pay? Or you do?
That is correct, no, it does not have to be on the license for the retro.
Okay. Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, use the same sign. It passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda is the Salary Administration Employee Compensation policy. Seventy-five oh two.
Good evening Chair Rogers, Board members, Dr. Lewis, and the DPS family. Please pull up the Salary Administration Policy Presentation. I just have a few slides. Thank you. Tonight I bring you the Salary Administration Policy for final reading and adoption. At this time, I just have a brief presentation. I really just want to celebrate the journey of the policy working group, which has spanned a little more than a year. And this collaborative working group consisted of employees across the district as we worked many hours, both virtually and some in person, on this policy being brought forth tonight for adoption. Next slide, please. To revisit the purpose of this policy. From the onset. The group was to establish context following the many conversations around compensation here in the district. In addition, to establish a working group to provide feedback on policy documents that we reviewed, exemplar documents from other districts around the, across the, across the state. And to determine next steps, which brings us here today. Next slide, please. And next slide. Next slide. The objective of this policy is to ensure fair, consistent, and lawful employee compensation and salary administration. Next slide. Updates to this policy are included in the policy document that you have in the board docs, but also includes definitions that we added such as hold harmless and legacy differential. The feedback that we've received from our gender reviews and just from feedback, we've updated in the policy documents with track changes. And in addition, we've added, next slide, please. A guidelines document, which is in draft form to accompany the policy document. And this document is still in draft form, but it's not presented tonight for action, but for information. Next slide. And with that. I will take any questions regarding the policy.
Colleagues, any questions, comments? A motion, question, Ms. Umstead?
Thank you all for adding the hold harmless and the other legacy pay definitions, I know we talked about that last time. And I think there's some more explicit verbiage in there around the board, needing to approve salary increases, which I think is really helpful. I feel sometimes like a little bit of a broken record, because I still think we have this tension around steps annually. And our current salary schedules, and a step move means that you also are getting a pay increase. Which also makes me wonder if that's budgeted in our budget for next year or not, which is a different conversation maybe for the budget priority activity. And I'm not sure, I guess my question more of like, what is the plan to help us rectify that tension that's still kind of currently existing in that?
I think one of the things, Board member, I'm saying that we really need to do is add verbiage to the current salary schedules to help explain it right on the website page. I think that will help to bring some clarity until there's another salary schedule that's added to that webpage that is much more user-friendly, that really looks at steps. And, you know, not always with the pay increases right attached to them. So that it's more clear.
Ms. Carter-Atton, then Ms. Chavez?
Sorry, thank you for bringing this, and I. My question was a little bit the same, well, not the same one, but it was related to the guidelines document and the track changes that are in like, under athletic pay and the arts. And I was wondering, I think that what that's trying to do is trying to clarify that, like, separate the step from the payment, and I was. I know that the board does not need to approve the guidelines, or at least I don't think that we need to. But my recommendation would be that maybe you guys work on clarifying that a little bit more. Because I understand that one step does not equal a pay increase, but I think we just need to be clear, try to figure out a way to say that. So that it's very clear to everybody that's implementing, everybody who's reading this and all across the, you know, in all the places. So, because it took me a while, I kept reading this and rereading it, trying to figure out why it was copied and pasted in a couple of different places, and then I realized that's probably what was going on there, so.
Thank you.
Ms. Chavez?
Wanted to make a motion to approve Policy seventy-five oh two, Salary Administration and Employee Compensation.
Second?
Removed by Ms. Chavez, seconded by Ms. Byer, to approve the Salary Administration Policy seventy-five oh two. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, please use the same sign. Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the Budget Prioritization Tool. And this is for discussion and information, Mr. Teter?
So this should go quickly, Madam Chair, we're just going to share my screen. Thank you for that. Right, so just as a, just as a reminder for the board, so just a summary page here to sort of capture some history of what was adopted by the county commissioners, so an increase of twelve million nine hundred twenty-seven thousand five hundred and eighty dollars to our local current expense fund was authorized by the county commissioners at their meeting on June the ninth.
I'm sorry, Mr. Teter, can you make that bigger?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We there?
That's good.
Okay, fantastic, so we'll remember two hundred percent next time. And so we will, the capital, and then the capital outlay component is a little more complicated, right, there's a lot of history with how the county has funded DPS's capital outlay appropriation. And so in the, in the twenty-four, twenty-five year, we received eight million dollars for capital outlay purposes with a combination of two resources. Two million of that came from local tax dollars or local resources. And then six million of that was the result of the county's ARPA dollars. Moving forward into the current year, we requested that the county continue that eight million dollar level of funding. Ultimately, that did not materialize, and we're getting a five million dollar appropriation from the county. All five million of those coming from their local resources with the sun setting of ARPA dollars forthcoming. I think the, the original proposal was for us to get six, to sort of mirror where we were a couple of years ago. And the commissioners, in, in their process, decided to divert a million of that towards the twelve point nine million dollar increase that we saw on the current expense side of the coin, so just wanted to unpack that history. So nonetheless, I've already been in communication with Mr. Barnes about capital outlay funding and what's available. So we're anticipating the five million this year. And the capital outlay fund balance in particular has a little over nine million that's available that his team may need to tap into next year depending on what our needs are, so just wanted to keep that in the forefront for the board. Give me a moment while we move to two hundred here. Or at least get a little bit closer in that direction. With the knowledge, with the knowledge that we had a little over twelve million to work with versus potentially what was going to be a smaller number, it seemingly made decisions easier for the board as well as for staff about items that we would fund. I should have only made one tab because they are the same between both bodies. And so the consensus sort of arrived at essentially funding everything with the caveat of the teacher supplement being a five hundred dollar increase rather than the seven hundred dollar increase that was originally requested. The bus driver supplement to the max. The current master's pay model, keeping that in place with the addition of social workers. All of the three components connected to mental health. Including panorama, the additional EC funding, as well as the musical instrument refresh. So, so both bodies sort of landed at the same point. So again, as the chair said, this is for information or discussion. And what you will see sort of operationalized from staff in, in upcoming meetings is that we will seek action from the board on various components, we'll seek authorization to formally increase that teacher supplement, we'll seek authorization to formally authorize that bus driver supplement, and we will ultimately seek authorization for the, the construct of that master's pay effort for twenty-five, twenty-six, and certainly allow conversation around that. We, we know where it landed with the tool, but the, the board may have additional conversation about what you want to do there. We would also ultimately for some of these items, their purchase is above staff's ninety thousand dollar threshold, so we'll need you to approve those purchases individually, as those, in some cases, as those contracts come together. I will also share that panorama was paying attention to some of our conversations in previous meetings, and saw when we were thinking that we were getting less money, that we had a little bit to work with that wasn't quite that three eleven, five ninety-five, and they offered some pricing concessions to try to help get us there, so we may we may come in less than that three eleven, five ninety-five in order to make that work, so that was a really unexpected outcome, so. So just, just to prepare the board for that. And so that, those are my only remarks that I have, and, and we look forward to getting the new year started and bringing you items to, to review in the next couple of months.
Thank you, Mr. Teter. Could we get a static copy of what the consensus was?
Yes, so I'll make sure that Dr. Lewis has that to push out in this week's update.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions, comments? Ms. Chavez, thank you.
Thank you for this. Really helpful, nice to see where we're landing here. So, I met with some of our DAE leaders this week, who, and it was good to hear their thinking on things and priorities. One of the things that they have requested is a two hundred dollar supplement for bus monitors in addition to bus drivers, and so I know Ms. Carter-Atton asked for those numbers, like, what that would cost us, I think their estimate was about one thirty, one thirty thousand. But, I guess, is there consensus, I know you might not have been able to pull that together today, but is there, where does that request stand, or do we need more consensus to ask for that?
From a financial component, operating under the assumption with sixty-five safety assistance or bus monitors, their, their math is correct, just evaluating salary only. But then when we apply, apply benefits, we're looking at closer to a hundred and forty thousand if we were to do that. And then I'll, I'll defer to colleagues, just on, my other colleagues, on the philosophy of the concept in general.
And I'll start with the, in terms of the philosophy, if it definitely was the board's will to address our safety aides, which we all appreciate and know we need on all, you know, the the buses that they are assigned to. I would also want to increase our bus driver supplement even higher, because the goal of that was to recruit and retain bus drivers. And what I don't want to do is to begin to recruit people that says, well, I wanted to drive, but now I'll just be a safety assistant and ride, because I get the same supplement. So wanting to, again, address our need, you know, definitely going into this coming year, because we cannot go back to what we did last year. And so again, going back to the original goal of where the need was from an equity standpoint, it was our bus drivers. Not to say that our safety assistants and bus monitors are, are not, you know, as important, or, you know, their role is important as well. But at that time, that was a need, and so again, if, you know, it's the board's will to invest in our safety assistance, I would definitely want to, you know, be able to address our bus drivers, so we can, again, be able to attract bus drivers, which was what the need was at that time, and still is. And I'll ask any other colleagues if they had additional thoughts as well, I mean, because we, we have been talking about this at length as well.
Dr. Lewis, one other piece of that was that we wanted to try to encourage our safety assistants to get their CDL so they will become bus drivers, and so if we keep the pay too close, there's no incentive for them to become bus drivers instead of safety assistants.
Ms. Harold Goff, and then Ms. Carter-Atton?
Are the bus drivers? Are the salaries the same, are they that close to monitor to bus driver?
They are fairly close, there's been, with the increase last year, there was a little less compression, but that has been something that has been an ongoing concern that has been shared with administration. And we have discussed that in HR and finance as we look towards long-term compensation, reevaluating compensation, that is a concern. And so I do believe we did share, and I think just want to reiterate in second what Dr. Lewis indicated, that that is accurate, that the purpose that if we were to do that, which is, I'm sorry, I'm going to repeat what he said, exactly what he said.
Perhaps. Or for the sake of just knowing both of the salaries are still fairly, you know, low. Maybe if the supplements aren't the same, but that they, we still look into seeing if we can have a maybe, not a same, not the same, maybe not the two hundred, but a hundred and fifty years, or a lower supplement or something, you know. Would still, you know, us trying to think about how we're going to grow salaries to be, you know, livable and competitive wage, but I would like to do something for our bus monitors if we, if we can find it in the budget to do so.
Dr. Giovanni?
Thank you. It was Dr., we have obviously been in transition with the COO, you know, still in transition with the COO, but with Mr. Barnes predecessor, Dr. Lewis, and before Mr. White had come on board. We did discuss some. We did discuss some kind of additional incentives. And so I think what I would ask Dr. Lewis and the board is to allow administration, let Mr. White, who's now the, I think he started three days ago, I think, I don't know. Something like that, who is the executive director of auxiliary services, kind of let him get situated with his team, learn the transportation. But Dr. Lewis had shared some innovative ideas. And we had talked with the finance officer and just kind of needed to cost those out so that you're ensuring that you're getting a return on the investment because it is recognized, you know. And I think just if I can share, Dr. Lewis, just what he had indicated is that kind of when you have this, one of the things, he had several things. But one of the things that Dr. Lewis had indicated is that if people can only get this attendance bonus, if they don't miss a single hour, like you can't be a minute late, you can't miss a day. Once people do that and things happen, they just wash their hands, right? And so they're like, well, I missed a day already, so then they just continue to miss a day. So just continuing to have those, just being human, right, and understanding the human part of this at first and really being thoughtful around it instead of just kind of throwing like just a generic supplement at it, but really looking at like, how can we make sure that we're rewarding our folks that come and are on time, et cetera? So that would really be kind of my request is to let, let Mr. White get on board and just continue on with that. And then we can work with Dr. Lewis and Mr. Teeter and bring back to this board, depending on what the budget looks like and kind of what our staffing is looking like as we continue to recruit, we continue to get new folks on. And we would like to maybe have the opportunity to flesh out Dr. Lewis's ideas and some additional ideas that Mr. White and Mr. Barnes have and bring those back to the board. That would be my request at this point.
Do we anticipate that we will always need monitors as as much as we need bus drivers? Like, because I hear, you know, we want our monitors to become bus drivers. We we want them to become bus drivers, but do we also want to be able to? Do I, do our buses need, you know, I'm, I'm asking a really tough question.
It is a really tough question. Mr. Barnes raising his hand, thank you.
So we are required to have safety monitors on our EC buses, so there will always be a need for safety monitors. And some of our most challenging buses, we also put those up there so to make sure that our bus drivers are able to operate the bus safely. So yes, there will always be a need.
I I also feel that, you know, some of our monitors that that do that, they they feel calling that that is their place, that, you know, they may not be wanting to drive buses, but they feel very strongly about being a monitor. And so and at the same time, you know, so and and when I'm looking at it that way, and when we're thinking about recruitment internally, if someone wants to move forward, I don't, I can see how it could be an incentive if it's more pay, but I also think that we want to maintain the integrity of those monitor positions as well, the ones who are serving that way, yeah.
Dr. Giovanni, you have a response to Ms. Harold Goff?
Not that, I don't know if it's a response, but just kind of what I would say is, I do agree, Mr. Barnes. Today, as Dr. Lewis shared, we had our leadership retreat and we had Mr. White and the principals. We really are doing a lot more collaboration and just understanding that we are all educators and we're all working together. And so he had come up, he had worked with the principal team on just some ways to increase and address some of the challenges that we have had on our buses with behaviors. And so I do think that, you know, obviously with like Mr. Barnes said, we're always going to have to have monitors. But I think the goal is ultimately to really look at this holistically and appreciate the fact that the bus is part of the educational process and how we address that again holistically. And so again, I think I'm, all I'm saying is at this point, and I think we shared this previously, is that it's not the recommendation for the monitors to get a supplement at this point, but not saying never, but really looking at how can we get the most bang for the buck that may be going towards transportation so that it improves the experience of our students, the experience of our monitors, the experience of our bus drivers. So and I I don't have a timeline for that, Dr. Lewis, I'm sorry. But but we do have that sense of urgency, as you heard today from Mr. White and Mr. Barnes.
Ms. Carter-oddin.
I appreciate all this discussion and the approach to, I'm glad y'all are thinking about this and looking at it. And I look forward to hearing some recommendations come from you all after you've been doing that and talking to the team. Because I, I do, it does sound like in order for EC buses to get, you know, for those kids to get to school, they need the monitors on the bus. So the bus drivers can't drive and the kids can't get to school without them. And I don't want to create friction between the, as we do, as has been noted by other board members. We create friction when we give some people one thing and other people not, don't get the thing. So that's always going to happen, yes, but if these people work together on the same bus, that's challenging. I was just trying to look at the difference in the pay and it looks like our bus monitors are eighteen oh four for starting pay. And I just wanted to know, I can't tell how much starting bus drivers make because on the page, it's gives me two separate rates still. Like on the same page in our website, it says that starting pay is nineteen forty three an hour. And then later on that same website says that starting pay for bus drivers is eighteen eighty six an hour. So could we look at that and see why it has that discrepancy? Do you know already, Mr. Barnes?
It is nineteen forty three.
Okay, so that's the right one. So then if we just pick so that it doesn't also have the wrong one on the page, but I'm glad to hear it's the the higher one. And then my only other thing I wanted to say about the budget was at this late hour that I do want to, I would like a plan, our, from my perspective, our original intent with the masters pay was to restore what was done, being done by the state, which means that we have still left people out, as which has been noted this evening, kind of, yes. And so I would like a plan for us to be moving in that direction. So in the next year, for us to be thinking about ways to expand masters pay to those that would have been included had the state not taken it away. With, and if we need to focus that further with a focus on those that work most like with our students in the classroom would be my preference. And I don't know that that's, so just wanted to state that as well.
Ms. Spire.
I appreciate the conversation. I appreciate you all listening to us as we wrestle through what is, I think, a shared value of wanting to pay everyone that that it works for us in all the capacities more. Struggling while we wait for the state budget to be completed and is unknown. And I would appreciate your guidance so that we don't continue to get ourselves with our aspirations in situations where we can't afford what we, what we want to do. So I hope that we can wait and give y'all time and and not just knee jerk because we, that's exactly how we got here with so much of the last two years. And and the transportation crisis is, it was our most urgent issue this year. And and we have to start the school ready and and that impact on attendance is so, so, so critical. So thank you so much for focusing on the, and digging into what we need to to make informed decisions that we can sustain going forward. Thank you.
Chavez, did you have something? As I said.
Appreciate this budget prioritization activity and how it's kind of forcing us to make some decisions and think critically about what we're going to fund. I do think this is related to the conversation about bus monitors. We've had a cadence in Durham of doing certified, classified, certified, classified when it comes to requests for pay increases, which would mean that classified workers are next since we did certify. Which also I think has been noted that we might need some version of a mini salary study in order to do that, which would also include, I'm assuming, bus monitors and bus drivers. So is there any way to speak to what that might look like moving forward?
So very much been actively thinking about how we would roll that work out. I think, you know, step number one is evaluating if your employees are on the appropriate grade in our schedule, right? So whether it's, you know, NC one or up through NC ten or wherever, right on the scale. So evaluating appropriate placement, you know, based on the job description, the complexity of the work, comparable, you know, entities, the city, the county, our peer and aspirant districts in North Carolina. And then from there, right, there's the separate, the separate issue to evaluate of the compression in the schedule and and how to alleviate that. And so, so a two parter. And I think the more, the the second part, right, of of assessing how you can alleviate the compression is sort of the easier or quicker work, right? So it's just a matter of us building those tables and and coming up with costs for how to support in that way. But the the assessment of the appropriate placement where the greatest concern requires more work because we, you know, need to survey for that data and and really do some thorough assessment of the positions in the district. But that certainly to your point, tho- those positions in question, drivers and 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 safety assistants would would be evaluated.
Are we, are we working on something so we could have a recommendation for twenty six, twenty seven?
So I think that's certainly a goal. So so as soon as we close the fiscal year, you know, we're we're ready to start, you know, evaluating that. And and just, right, just sort of preview for the year ahead. You know, we'll be asking, we'll be asking you in September or October to adopt a budget calendar for this next cycle with that goal of getting a request to the county by March this time. But along that way, we'll be doing the work to to develop some pay models and and costs for those so that when Dr. Lewis comes forward with an early superintendent's recommended budget, there will be something in there that speaks to the classified pay effort that the board can evaluate and react to.
Thank you, that's helpful. The other question I have is, as we were doing this budget prioritization activity, and it made me wonder again about this, is there any step increase included in what we budgeted for the upcoming year?
At this juncture, you know, we we budgeted on a particular percentage increase. We moved forward with an estimate that it might be a three percent. I think it's important to note that whatever decision the state makes with classified employee compensation is accompanied by some dollars, right? So some of our state funding is reactive to a state raise. And so if we find that the state raise for classified employees is not palatable, which is possible, just based on the many budget proposals that we saw this week in that last ditch effort on the state to at least adjust pay, we will need to evaluate just sort of where we are and what can we do with our local resources to bridge that. I know that in some previous board meetings, we've had a conversation about trying to move in a direction of doing nothing less than a two percent raise for our employees. And so, so we're we're certainly keeping that in mind so that we're prepared to react to whatever Raleigh does or or perhaps doesn't do and go from there. But but at this point, not necessarily contemplating the step being the driver, but just sort of a flat increase for everybody.
I appreciate that. I think we, we like keep having this conversation and I want us to like find the resolution to it. And it might be as we do this classified study and we look at the schedules again because if I'm looking at my schedule and I move a step, there's a pay increase attached to that. And so how do we? We find some resolution on that, this feels important.
And so and logistically, what we do, you know, so more districts than not sort of do it the way that I'm about to describe, right? Of, you know, this year, if I'm on a step five, and next year I'm going to advance to a step six with a three percent raise. The district ensures that step six is worth three percent more than what step five was in the year before to sort of comply with that increase. And so that generally is what a lot of districts do in order to contain costs. So sometimes, you know, the steps can get carried away. However, you know, if it's sort of the vision of the board and and the vision of the superintendent that we move forward in the twenty six, twenty seven cycle with evaluating, how can we have some system of steps that guarantees that? We can certainly do that and and contemplate what that looks like in the next budget proposal.
Thank you. Anybody else, Ms. Chavez?
Okay, so let me ask first about the, the reevaluation of classified salaries. So are you saying, Mr. Teeter, that we can do this in-house when we don't need a consultant? Okay.
Yeah, so I've I've done salary studies on the road and 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 happy to offer those services to move us forward and just save that headache and save that money.
Okay, awesome. And when, do you have an estimated time of when we would get to see those salaries, schedules?
So our goal would be to 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 be able to sort of, you know, so just thinking from a back, you know, backwards mapping, right? Our goal, right, is to get the budget for requests to the commissioners by March. Our goal would then to be get, to get the superintendent's recommended budget in front of you in January to give you a couple of months to to consume that and react to it. And and so then, so certainly at the very latest, right, you would see some proposal along with that. But I would imagine ahead of the recommended budget from the superintendent, you know, we will have some some sort of preview of what some options might look like, but at the very latest in January with his recommended budget.
Thank you, that's really helpful. And thank you for using those skills in here in Durham. So my other thing is just going back to the bus monitors. I've, I think I'm okay with a differential supplement. Like you were saying, Dr. Lewis, the possibility of that between bus drivers and bus monitors. I do think the input from our staff, I felt, I found useful and and it seems that we had some conversation about like bus monitors being part of helping to retain bus drivers too because of the role that they serve. And I can only imagine that it takes a lot to monitor a whole bus or to, you know, kind of manage a whole bus of kids. You know, as a bus driver without support. So in, so what else do I want to say about that? I think, I guess I want to ask, is there any possibility that we would, could do a bus monitor supplement and using the money from the instrument refresh and then take those nonrecurring funds from another source? Is that a possibility? Is it possible that we would, we could use the bus mon, bu, use the instrument refresh funds for a bus monitor supplement instead, since those are nonrecurring? And then take the and pay for the instrument refresh from another source?
That would be for just one year though, right? Because what would you do the following year?
That would be for one year and then like other things, it would be, like all the other supplements, it'd be figuring it out for next year.
Dr. Giovanni.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding this, Ms. Chavez. Like you're just asking like kind of speculatively because that's not the recommendation. Is that, I'm just making sure that I'm there because I do think that, again, you know, Dr. Lewis has made some statements and I think Mr. Teeter and I had talked about this as well, that, you know, the two hundred dollars for monitors and two hundred dollars for bus drivers, we would have to pay, we would want to pay then bus drivers an additional amount. So there's just, and that's why we were kind of suggesting that we'd be given the space to kind of look at all of this and figure out like what we can do in transportation, right, and in operations to make sure that we're getting the bang for the buck. And just making sure that, that that's what we're doing. So I just, so when you're, I'm just, I just want to make sure I'm understanding your question of you're just saying like hypothetically, is that a possibility financially for Mr. Teeter and not saying to operations or Mr. Barnes or myself or that, is that, are you wanting to pull money from somewhere else to put it on bus monitors? Am I, did I just completely misunderstand what you were saying?
No, I mean, I'm, that's what I'm asking. It is a hypothetical question. I, I think the, the thing with, like, yeah, go, I, I, I've said for months, I agree with the idea of like looking at the the bonus that we give, the attendance bonus, I support that. I think, you know, Dr. Lewis has brought up, you know, it might not be the most effective way of giving a bonus and everything. So I'm all for you all bringing a different recommendation about that. So I'm all for you all bringing a different recommendation about that. Where I am potentially disagreeing is holding off on a bus monitor supplement. I think there could be a purpose for it now, even if it's not the same supplement as the bus drivers. And if that were a possibility to do now, and we're talking about a relatively small amount of money, but it has to come from somewhere. So that's where the source of my question, is there a way to pull it from another line?
So just again, seeking clarity, well, I think again, just maybe seeing, asking again, I think, I don't want to just like kind of on the fly be trying to figure out like what would be the best thing for bus monitors with regard to any type of bonus or supplement. Like I just, I think, I just, I don't think that's the way to do it. I think what I'm hearing from the board is that y'all want us and you want us to make it a priority in transportation to go. Go ahead, Dr. Lewis.
No, go ahead.
No, okay. And make it a priority to go and look and see if that is something that is going to benefit the district, right? And potentially make sure and improve the service to our students as well. And I, we are willing to do that, but I don't want to say, I don't, I just am very uncomfortable, you know, sitting here, not having thought it through. I don't want to put Mr. White in that position who's been here for three days and barely just being like, hey, you know, you're, you got to figure out like this two hundred dollars. So I just would ask Grace, honestly, Ms. Chavez, to allow us, and I understand the urgency, right? I understand the urgency of this board in compensating our bus monitors and bus drivers and Dr. Lewis's. And so we can certainly, Mr. Barnes can certainly have his team, you know, make this a priority and come and work with Mr. Teeter and Dr. Lewis and come up with some options and some plans that where we ensure we're getting the return on that investment and that have been well thought out and vetted. That's, that's really, I just, I hate to do that, but I just don't want to kind of on the back of the envelope, figure that out.
Yeah, well, I mean, it needs board, the whole board needs to agree too. But I was asking a hypothetical question about how money could be shifted around. But, yeah.
I'd say technically, yes. Right, the technical answer is yes, but.
Well, there'd be interest from the board to allow us an opportunity to wait until the state budget settles, engage our bus monitors and and drivers. Because what I don't want to do is appear that we're solving a problem by throwing money at it. But being intentional about getting direct feedback from the bus monitors in a way that we also, you know, fulfill our intent behind providing bus drivers with supplement, which was to recruit. Because I will not go back to the experience we had last year, right? You know, because it impacted our students and families in a major way. So I think once we, you know, allow the state budget to settle, the good thing is, you know, a lot of buses are not rolling right now. And so to give us an opportunity for that to settle, engage our bus monitors and bus drivers, they may have other ideas, you know. And and I will use this this moment here because one of the things we heard from bus monitors and drivers was behavior. And just today, Mr. White shared the work that he had been working with principals and the team around rectifying some of the issues. And one of the issues was the way that they were reporting discipline issues. It seemed like, I mean, it was like they had to scan a paper in email and it just kind of got lost in the file. And so as a result of that, all of our bus discipline issues will now go through educator handbook, which is what our classroom discipline make, issues go through, go through. And auditorium erupted in applause once he shared that with with principals because we know that's a way that we can address the concerns of our bus drivers in a meaningful way, in a timely manner as well. And also address some of the challenges that we're hearing from our bus monitor as well. So all that to say, there's a lot of work that's been going on to address some of our transportation challenges. I do hear you in terms of investing in our bus monitors. What I'm asking is if if the board will allow us to, you know, let the state budget settle. And then we could bring, we can bring back some options that meets both needs. So we may bring an option that will increase our bus driver supplement, which will help us and to support and invest in our bus monitors. If that, if that makes sense.
Yep.
Miss Emstead, did you have something else you wanted to say?
I do. I, I like appreciate this conversation a lot. And I think I'm wondering, like back to my, like, how do we zoom out and look at bigger picture parts of all of this too? And if, I know we're talking about relatively smart amount, smaller amount of money, but like, will this, will relooking at the schedules also address some of these issues? Will this, like, will it also create more around the, thinking about the salary schedules, right? And be able to actually align those a little, or not align actually, but create some of the, oh my goodness, it's late. Create some of the differentials, thank you, Ms. Haroldoff, that we're looking for. And so I just, I like, I appreciate the attentiveness too, but I just also want us to be able to zoom out and look and think about this holistically. And so I don't, I guess my my thought process is like, is it collectively, do we all want? You all are going to continue to address the transportation challenges, but is there a desire to work on supplement particularly? Or is that something that we would like to see actually wrapped into this larger conversation around classified salary? Personally, I would like to see it in the larger conversation, but.
Ms. Spire.
Yeah, no, I appreciate the, all the ideas that have been shared. I also sit here, as we all do, knowing that our budget request to the county was not fully funded. So it feels like we're trying to add things that we didn't ask for because we want a lot of things. We do, we do, we do, and we need a lot of things. We need a lot of extra. But I just want us to sit with the notion that we're four million short of what we asked for-ish, is that right, Mr. Teeter? Four and then ish, I don't know. And so we did just like on this worksheet, cut the teacher supplement. And all of our teachers were expecting a seven hundred dollar a year and we're proposing potentially a five hundred. We haven't even communicated that. There's a lot of work still to do as we await this. And I look forward to y'all stepping back, giving us that big picture. There's such a, there's such a temptation to 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 address whoever's the most squeaky or the loudest at the podium all the time. And I just look, look forward to y'all taking that that bird's eye view and bringing recommendations after the state budget is better informs us, thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the Glenn Project temporary increase authority. Dr. Giovanni?
Good evening, Chair Rogers, board members, Dr. Lewis, members of the Durham community. This item is before you requesting temporary authority and waiving board policy regarding the authority of the superintendent to enter into contracts or to approve expenses exceeding ninety thousand. You have some details in the precis. And welcome any questions regarding this. But what we are asking is for the Glenn Elementary School Project, which is currently in a two-shift-a-day mode, potentially may go to three shifts if they are, if necessary. We are asking that, given the fact that there are no board meetings between in July and then given the need, we need twenty-four hour turnaround on this, that the board authorized Dr. Lewis and Dr. Lewis only to approve change orders or contingencies up to three hundred thousand dollars to expire on the first day of school. And with him agreeing to report to the full board within twenty-four hours of any such approval between ninety and three hundred thousand to the full board in detail of what that approval was and what it was, what it was for. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. And I do want to point out that this is precautionary. The Glenn Project is, Mr. Barnes, correct me if I'm wrong, ahead of schedule. So this is precautionary is my understanding. But as construction projects can go, they can be on time one week and something happens and then they're behind. And there also is a mandate that we bring an update, that administration bring an update to the board at its work session in August as well to ensure that the project will open on time. And that is really the bottom line. And why we are asking for this extraordinary request is to ensure that there are no barriers in the Glenn School Project opening on time. Happy to take any questions. And if you read the precis, that is, was written by Mr. Rod Malone. So he is sitting to my right and happy to answer any questions regarding this statement, thank you.
Ms. Chavez. Then Ms. Spire.
I'd like to move that the board increased the superintendent's authority to approve any individual change order pursuant to board policy ninety thirty on the Glenn Elementary School Project from ninety thousand to three hundred thousand through August twenty twenty, August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. So long as funding for the change order is available within the established project budget and that the superintendent report to the board via email and within twenty-four hours, any approved change orders at Glenn Elementary.
Been moved by Ms. Chavez, seconded by Ms. Spire. To authorize the superintendent authority to approve any individual change order pursuant to board policy ninety thirty on the Glenn Elementary School Project from ninety thousand dollars to three hundred thousand dollars through August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. So long as the funding for the change order is available within the established project budget and the superintendent report to the board via email and within twenty-four hours, any approved change orders at Glenn Elementary School. Is there any further discussion? Ms. Emstead.
Just the request, we have meetings in August. So if the the superintendent can email the board when a change order happens, but also bring a list of those to the work session.
That's in the document.
It's not in the motion, so sorry. I apologize if I missed that.
Okay. Would you like us?
Oh, okay, I apologize, it was not in, the motion says.
Would you like us to add it to the motion?
It's okay, just fine.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, use the same sign. Passes unanimously. All right, the next item on our agenda is for information only, is the monthly change order report. And then closed session. As per this spring, we will no longer be streaming or providing, thank you, interpretation services after closed session. So we wish you all a happy summer and for year-round schools, a happy first day of school. Is there a motion going to closed session?
Moved that we go into closed session for the reasons stated on the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Spire, seconded by Ms. Haroldoff, that we go into closed session for the reasons stated on the agenda. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, use the same sign. Passes unanimously, we're now in closed session.